You can't see me, huh Sean? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know what the hell's up with this camera.
Oh yeah, you're, oh, that's very different.
No, it's not. It has nothing to do with Zoom. It has to do with, um, with the camera because even when I use GoToMeeting or any other sort of, uh, meeting format, it won't, it won't work.
What, what kind of device is it?
It's my laptop. It has a built-in camera.
Does it, does Zoom ever ask you if you want to change your preferences? Does it ever say, you know, do you, do you want to change your, um, system preferences to allow video? Does it ever ask?
But it's not, but it's not Zoom. It's the, it's the camera, cause, cause I, I use GoToMeeting, I use, um, what's the other, the Microsoft one? Is it like I, my team or something, whatever it is?
Yeah, Microsoft Teams, I think.
Yep, Teams, and it will not allow it to work. It doesn't, let me rephrase that. It doesn't work on those other formats either.
Oh, that's weird. But if, so if you're not using one of those items, you're okay though?
Yeah, like I can share my screen.
That is weird.
See?
Yep.
Um.
I wonder if it's just a permissions issue, like with the camera on the laptop. I don't, you know, I don't really know if.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah. How the hell, oh, stop the share, there it is. I was gonna say, there I go, now I messed it up, I'm sharing my screen.
Carol, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Sean, we hear you.
So now, this laptop, did you use this before with Zoom?
I, so, the new laptop that I got at work, I initially used it with camera and it worked. Um, then all of a sudden, so one week I used it at work, the next week, it didn't work.
That's weird.
Yeah. I don't know if I clicked something, I don't know what I did.
Um, I, I guess that's why I was wondering if it, I mean, I guess it could be, um, like a security setting within the, um, the laptop. Hold on one second, Kadim's calling. He must think we can't hear him.
Yeah, I don't know what's going on.
I'm just trying to get everything set up. Um, so what I'm gonna do, just want to make sure I'm doing this under the right account. Um, actually, I think I'm gonna have to switch accounts now that I'm looking at it.
You've got too many accounts going on.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a choice. I have to be remoted into the work computer. Um.
I'm just playing with you.
I'm trying to figure out how to do that without losing connection, but I don't think that's gonna work.
Are you trying to do, put a handsome picture of me on the screen?
Yes, yes.
We're trying to gain fans here.
That's impossible.
I'll actually, I'm gonna log off, I'm gonna have to log back in, uh, differently in order to get it to share to Facebook. I'll, I'll be right back.
Okay. So yeah, um, it, complete mess, uh, mix-up with all the chats, so I don't know what happened, but.
Ah, this happened before with the two Davids, it's, it happens, what are you gonna do?
No, no, it's Adams', it's mine, it's your, it is.
Mine's fine. Well, mine's fine. That's why I didn't text anybody. It's, it's happened before, like I said, I've had Nelson's before, and what are you gonna do?
It's not a big deal.
Oh, it's not.
I didn't say it was a big deal, I just wanted to make sure you guys looked, because I didn't know until today.
No, I agree, I agree with you, Adam. It was just, it was just weird, because Dave thought I had his, and when I opened my packet last night, I saw I had yours.
Where are you, Adam? You're down in, uh, Arizona or something, right?
No, not yet. I leave tomorrow. I go to, we're sick.
So it's the next meeting that you said you may have to zoom in, depending if you have the time or not, right?
Yeah, I, I, I'll know better. This one's very heavy and writing and a lot of fake stress. So I don't know how much time I'm gonna have. Um, yeah, it's a leadership course, we're doing a lot of communication and writing. So a lot of reading, it's gonna be a heavy homework, so it's not a fun course.
I need to download a background, so people don't see my kids' toys and everything else going on.
So all you do is, uh, I took a snippet from the website, and I had to like reverse it, and so it would come out right. But, um, you can set it in your video options, I believe. I forgot how I did it now.
You said you had to reverse it, so it came out right?
Yeah, because it, it mirror images.
No, I'm looking at it right now, and it's a mirror image.
Oh, really? Mine's, I'm looking at it, and it looks right.
No, the town is on the right side to me, so yeah, I guess it should be flipped.
Wow, because it looks right to me, that's weird.
Yeah, no, it's, it's actually, the, the wording and everything is all backwards.
Oh, let me, uh.
A town of Seacom, you have up, Carol. How do I get that screenshot? Without my phone, I'm not sure.
Um.
I'm so used to my phone again, playing with that, not the computer.
Hold on, let me see if I can share it.
Uh, you know what? Then I gotta somehow do it to the phone connected to the computer.
Oh, I see. That's weird, so it always look reversed to me, I guess. Well, that's an even better picture.
Yeah. Problem is, I gotta somehow finagle it.
Just crop it.
Yeah, but I'm not, I'm not on my phone, I'm on the computer, so. We're live. I don't know how to crop it. Just letting you know. Let me see.
Sure, right?
I'm gonna log on through my phone, screenshot it and crop it that way.
Did that solve it?
No, he's still backwards.
Oh, maybe it's like a run.
I have someone, uh, just listed in the attendees with the last four digits of the phone number 5065. Um, I did open up your microphone, can you just let me know your name, so I can rename you?
Yes, Gary Sega.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I have another individual, just an attendees, uh, last four digits, zero, three, four, six. Um, can you just give me your name, so I'm able to rename you? I think I lost them.
Chris, can you back away from the camera, please?
It's my desk, hold on. Even better.
Sorry bud, just felt like picking on you.
You do my nice hairline?
Is everybody ready?
Um, so it looks like we're missing Mr. Vieira.
Hi. Justin, there were two things we talked today. About the warrant. I remember one of them. Can you look at your phone? Good work. Yeah, I'm sending it right now.
Um, Mr. Zor, are you signed in twice?
Yeah, my phone, because I had to do that thing. Yeah, I'm gonna log off right now.
David Arizona.
Did it log me out, Carol?
Um, yes, it did.
You're muted, Dave.
David.
Yes.
I have your check.
Uh, and Adam has yours, and I have Adam's.
Nice.
Justin, TV9 also. They say.
Uh, Cody also.
I'm good.
Hang on one second.
Uh, Sean, you're listed as, you're listed as the host, so I'm not gonna be able to share on Facebook. Um, I think you're gonna have to transfer that to me.
Okay.
To, uh, transfer it to the town of Seacom, I'm sorry.
Should be fine.
Thank you. My background's not working too good.
No, you need a, you need a plain surface behind you, usually, for it to really work well.
There you go, Adam. Alright.
Can I just, Carol, so I don't see how to.
Um, so if you click on the participants, and, um, where it lists us as panelists, just, uh.
Oh, I gotta go to you.
Yep, go to more, and.
I was going to me.
Okay, I think it'll allow you to change it to host. Yep, I got it. Um, so just let me know when you're ready, and obviously, it'll probably take just about, you know, fifteen, twenty seconds for it to, there's a fifteen, twenty second delay for the Facebook.
Okay, are all members on, that are on right now? You guys all ready?
I'm good.
Yep.
Alright, uh, TV9, you're good?
All set.
Great, alright, Carol, we're ready, just let me know when you're ready.
Okay, I'm gonna, um, start the live feed, and I'll let you know when it starts. Alright, it's, um, it's preparing the live stream, so it might just take a few seconds. And it looks like we're live.
Hey, great. Welcome, everybody, good evening, Happy New Year. Uh, welcome to tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting, uh, Wednesday, January 6th, uh, via Zoom. Per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this Board of Selectmen meeting. However, public comments and questions may be submitted to the Board in advance of the meeting by completing the Google form prior to the meeting by Tuesday, January 5th, 2021, by 4:30 PM. Also, the meeting will be broadcast live via Seacom Cable TV9 and streamed, and streamed live on Seacom Town Hall Facebook. Master of Law, Chapter 38, Subsection 20F, requires any person recording must notify the Chairman at the beginning of the meeting. There's nobody that I'm aware of. Like to call a meeting to order, can somebody please read the Boarding Committee openings?
Volunteers, go ahead. Volunteers are needed for the Board of Assessors, one Board of Selectmen appointment, Capitol Improvement Committee, two Board of Selectmen appointments, Commission on Disability, five to thirteen Board of Selectmen appointments, Economic Development Committee, five Board of Selectmen appointments, Energy Committee, one Board of Selectmen appointment, Historical Commission, three Board of Selectmen appointments, Parks and Recreation, one Board of Selectmen appointment, Recycling Committee, three Board of Selectmen appointments, and Zoning Board of Appeals, we need two alternates.
Okay, thank you. Uh, General Business, item A, consider the conditional offer of employment for Edward Monaghan III to the position of truck driver laborer for the Department of Public Works. Mr. Kadim?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would turn it over to Mr. Cabral. Just waiting for him.
I'm just unmuted, can you guys hear me now?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have, um, before, as I, I know you guys have copies of this, but, uh, Ed Monaghan, uh, so a conditional offer of employment. Ed was interviewed on August 11th, 2020. The panel consisted of Scott Alubry, Bruce Alexander, and myself. Uh, we had a second interview with Mr. Kadim on August 18th, uh, 2020. Um, so Ed Monaghan is, uh, lives in Seacom, he's the Seacom resident, he attended St. Ray's Academy, um, also attended CCRI for two years, as well as the John Carroll University School of Management. Um, and he currently has his Class B CDL license. His work experience, he, um, has been working for the Catholic Cemetery since 1987. He started out as a, um, hired swimmer help, uh, moved his way up there, uh, promoted to the foreman, superintendent, and currently head mechanic. He, uh, has responsibility there of maintaining two hundred and fifty pieces of equipment, from landscape equipment to, um, backhoes, loaders, and things of that nature. Um, he also has a side business of the landscaping business, uh, Ed Monaghan and Sun Landscape Services, and he is also a hired plow contractor for the town of Seacom. Um, he's been in, working in that capacity since 2005. Um, I met Ed when I started working here. He is by far the best plow vendor we've ever hired. Um, he's just really excellent at it. When he comes in, we keep him through the duration. Uh, if he doesn't agree to go home ahead of time, I keep him on. Um, part of his skillset, he has vast mechanical background experience, working on everything from, uh, you know, landscape equipment, lawn mowers, the dump trucks, and backhoes. He has thirty years' experience, um, in landscaping and grounds maintenance work. He has a tremendous amount of experience with plowing, as I mentioned, and, uh, he, this is his sixteenth season with the town. Um, you know, over the years, Ed and I have kinda learned from each other with that aspect of things, and, uh, just a great asset in that regard. Uh, with that said, I would like to make a favorable recommendation for the conditional offer of employment to Ed Monaghan III for the position of truck driver laborer for the DPW.
Sorry, I hit all the wrong buttons, all at once. Uh, Mr. Chairman, my recommendation is as stated by the, uh, Superintendent of Public Works.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Don't move for discussion.
We'll second.
Yeah, okay. Do we have a discussion?
Yeah, I just had a quick point that I wanted to say, so I see that he has, he has his own landscaping business, he realizes, Mr. Cabral, that, I mean, between working hours, he's not gonna be able to run that business, right?
Tell you that, he fully understands, he fully understands that, that's not a problem.
Okay, just wanna be clear on that.
Mr. Vieira.
Hopefully, he added that he is actually a town, uh, resident as well.
Mr. Cabral, um, does this bring you up to full strength?
Yes, this will bring us up to the, um, ten employees, which is the target number that we've had for a couple of years now, and that's excellent news.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I'll concur with, uh, Mr. Cabral, I don't know about the best, because I did do it for a little bit, so I don't know where that puts me. But, um, I don't know Ed personally, but I have seen his work, being out there, being a plow vendor, and his route was always done exceptionally well, so I can back that.
Okay. Uh, is there any other discussion? He's still, um, just, Mr. Chairman, no, I have a quick, uh, just an observation, maybe a question. So, so is he, just to clarify, is he, I understand he has his own business. Um, is he still, it says to present, is he still responsible for all the stuff at the, the cemeteries?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's his current, um, employment that he has right now.
Okay. Alright, I just, I concur with, uh, Mr. Andre's point, as long as he understands that no conflict of interest.
Yeah, this is, this is gonna, I guess, and, and to be really clear, this is going to be his job, right? So, understand that, like, he's gonna have to leave, unless he's somehow able to manage his time and handle things on weekends and outside of our working hours, you know, something's gonna have to give, and it's not gonna be the services to the town.
No, so if I can clarify that quickly, I think he just keeps that landscaping business open as a business for his plowing business that he uses for the town. His current job is during the day too, he doesn't have time to do a lot of landscaping anyway right now. So, he'd be working the same hours that he is currently now for the town.
Okay. Okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Vieira.
One quick question, this individual shouldn't have any problem maintaining our cemeteries, correct? I mean, he has the experience, right? And I realize we have someone doing that now, but if we can save some money, how come there's silence all of a sudden?
Mr. Cabral?
I, I would say, you know, his, his groundskeeping, you know, he's responsible for the mechanical equipment of all the cemeteries, so I don't know what capacity in terms of the actual groundskeeper and digging graves and that nature, but something we can certainly find out more about, um, if the Board chooses to do that, but he under, the understanding is the position for the DPW as truck driver laborer.
Okay, but from time to time, obviously, they do, uh, obviously, task that outside of their job, I'm not gonna say discretion, but the scope of their job, so if at all possible, and we could save some money, it would be nice. Thank you.
We're currently, we're currently, we're taking more of an active role in maintenance of the cemeteries, as it is right now.
Very good. You guys are doing all of, um, the cemetery, uh, that we just purchased, correct?
Texted, yes. We're, we're assisting, so the current contract is that the gentleman has, he takes care of both cemeteries, we assist, and whatever needed at both locations.
I, I could be wrong, but again, I know that's not what we're talking about, but, uh, I was under the impression that you folks were gonna maintain the cemetery at West River, but again, that's not what we're here for. Thank you.
Okay, very good. If there are any further discussion? Alright, if not, I'd like to, uh, have a roll call vote, please, starting with how we usually sit in the room, Mr. Petronio. Adam Petronio, aye.
David Vieira, aye.
Zora, aye.
Justin Phillips, aye. David Andrew, aye, 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, consider the reappointment of Neil Abelson as building inspector. Mr. Kadim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, after giving, uh, significant consideration to the reappointment of Mr. Abelson, I had a conversation with him uh, earlier this evening. Um, as it stands, uh, my recommendation to the Board of Selectmen would be a one-year, um, reappointment for Mr. Abelson.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Well moved.
We'll second it. Discussion.
Okay, um.
Mr. Vieira.
Why are we not offering him a three-year contract? I think the charter states three years.
Uh, the charter does state three years, but the, uh, last board member, uh, vote that the Board took was a one-year contract.
Right.
If the Board is, is looking not to do it one year, um, and we can, if you really want to talk about the reasons behind, uh, the request, we can get into that, a lot of it's gonna be personnel-related, I'm not sure we want to go down that road, but um, if, if it's gonna be a three-year, I'm not prepared to make a recommendation today, and if the Board wants a recommendation, it would be not to reappoint.
Okay, I'm confused why we can't go less than three years, that doesn't make sense to me. I mean, if we've got someone that we know, for example, is gonna retire in a year, uh, why would we be forced to offer them a three-year appointment if they know they're gonna retire in a year? That, is that some sort of limitation that says it has to be three years? I mean, it doesn't, that doesn't make sense to me. I mean, I think we should be within our right to be able to give an appointment that we feel fits within the timeline that we see we need.
I believe the charter language says should. I don't think it said we have to.
Then there you go.
So, if I could continue and just, um, quantify my, my question. Uh, I received a couple of phone calls today, asking that same exact question. Why is it just one year? Um, why isn't it three years? And, um, the charter is clear on three years.
I just, Mr. Chairman, just through you, I'm, I'm just curious how telephone calls were had about a one-year appointment when I just made the decision literally a half hour ago.
You know as well as I do that people, obviously, listen, they know that there was a offer of one year last year, okay, and they were just, I'm sure, assuming that it was gonna be a one-year contract this year. So I was asked the question, I'm just relaying the question, hopefully to get an answer that would satisfy the individuals that were concerned.
I would, I would hope that, uh, Mr. Vieira, you would have shared, uh, the concerns that we, I think we've all had over the last, especially the last year, if not, uh, the last several years with, uh, with Mr. Abelson. Um, I've had conversations with Mr. Abelson, so he knows where I, where I stand, where the, the Board of Selectmen uh, stands on terms of issues with the department, the operational aspect of this. Um, so I hope that was translated to those individuals. So I hope that was translated to those individuals.
Absolutely. I'm never lost for words, you know that.
What um. So, Mr. Vier, are you suggesting?
No.
Recommendation of three, or what is your, what is, what is your?
I'm just asking the question. Obviously, I don't think, and I could be wrong, and Sean, maybe you could clarify this. Can we increase it to three years versus the one year that you recommended? And as you stated, if the question was going to be. A three-year, you weren't prepared to make that recommendation.
You're on mute, Sean.
Sorry about that. The charter clearly states that it's a recommendation of the town administrator to the, to the board of selectmen.
Right, I understand that, but again, um. My point is the board couldn't increase it to three years anyway. If they felt it should be, am I correct? Your recommendation is one, we'd have to vote one or none at this point.
That's right, unless, unless the board's saying that they want either a three-year appointment or not a three-year appointment, at which point. Um, I, my recommendation to the board would not, would be not to reappoint.
Well, I know I made a motion for a one, I approved the motion for the one year. Well, I made the motion for the one year.
I second that. Well, you already got a second, I'm sorry.
Right.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
So I pulled up the town charter that's on the website. I'm just reading the language here. If somebody can help me out on this. Um, it does say. So it wasn't should, the word is shall. So the board of commission members and offices the town appointed under this article shall serve for three-year terms. Unless otherwise removed as provided in article eight. Unless there's a more updated charter than the one that's on the website.
Again, I think that. It may be the language, I, I, I don't necessarily think that was the intent. I don't, I don't want to say that I was, I'm in the minds of who were writing it. But again, I'm going to go back to my question. You know someone's going to retire in a year. And you're saying that we have to provide a three-year appointment for someone who is going to retire in one year? Doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, so. Mr. Kadim, do you know if, if there is a. Um, if there is a three-year appointment. Does um. Is the appointment itself, is it basically work as an at-will? For this position or that the position is, it's at-will employment versus, you know. You have to have just cause if there, if, you know, it's deemed within that three years that.
There's, there's a section in the charter that speaks to rescinding the appointment of the board.
Yeah, I'm trying to find that right now.
Yeah, within the collective bargaining agreement, uh, the, the rescinding and the appointment is not a grievable. Item for collective bargaining purposes.
Okay. Um. Trying to look for this here.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not going into a.
Yeah, I don't think we are.
Yeah. Elections and appointments. Transcribe them one year. So appointing of, for section nine, uh, says power to rescind appointments made by them, except appointments to the Board of Appeals and other quasi judicial boards. I don't know if that one is specifically applies to this, I'm just trying to.
Which article was that?
So I'm under article eight, general provisions in section nine, power to rescind appointments. And I'm not entirely sure if that applies to that. It seems like it does because it's a general. It's a general provision.
Again, it makes, we're going here, I don't even know why we're going on this. I'm going to go back to, and I know I've said it twice, I'm going to go back to my original question. What sense does it make for a board of selectmen to make an appointment for someone for a three-year term? Knowing full well that they will retire in one year? I'm not saying that's the case with Mr. Abelson, I'm saying, I'm putting that as an example, right? It makes absolutely no sense. And I don't think the intent, and again, I'm not going to pretend to have, to know what was in the minds of those who wrote the charter at the time. What presented with that scenario, I don't think the intent of those individuals would have been. Or it doesn't make sense to me that it would have been to. Implement a mandatory three-year sentence for someone who you, uh, sentence, term. Or appointment for someone who you know very well is going to be leaving at the end of one year. So.
But you don't know very well that this individual is, and I mean, just to go along with your conversation, David, you don't know. That this individual is going to retire in a year.
Um, no, I'm taking the individual out of it. This has nothing to do. My hypothetical scenario is what I see, I see the breakdown in the logic of what's being said, right? Take Neil, take, take, take Neil out of the equation. It's not Neil, it's anybody. Um. What sense does it make to make an appointment? To someone knowing they're going to retire in one year? That has to be a three-year appointment.
I, I understand that, and I'm not arguing whether this should be three-year or one-year. My point is. You're talking like you, and again, I'm going to say this and probably get myself in trouble, but it's like you have inside information that.
No, no, no.
Well, we're assuming that this person may retire in a year. We don't know that.
No, that's, no, but you're, you're focusing on the individual. I'm taking the individual out of it. But I am saying, I am presenting a hypothetical situation. I have no inside information. I don't know what any individual's plans are. You have employee Y, who has gone to the town administrator at some point in the future. And says, I plan to retire in one year, but my appointment, my reappointment is coming up in three months. But I'm going to retire a year from now, and they're a good employee, and we want to keep that employee.
Okay.
Well, the town administrator wants to make a motion, a recommendation to the board of selectmen for a one-year appointment. To keep that one, that good employee until we find their replacement and everything can transition. Why does that appointment need to be a three-year recommendation? It doesn't need to be.
To Mr. Andres' point, we just did it with Mr. Alexander. Mr. Alexander only got a two-year contract.
So, so we got two different languages going on here. We have contract language and then we have the charter.
Nope, the charter is, charter is very clear. It highlights all the individuals which are all the department heads associated with it, so the appointment is going to still be the same. The only difference is one's a contract, one's a collective bargain agreement with the union.
Okay. Okay, there's nuance there.
So like, for example, um, again, I'm going to go back to that one, right? Maybe this is an opportunity that we could, since we have the full town warrant coming up, we, and we have the, the charter on, on the agenda. That we um, that we take the opportunity to obviously correct something that can be misconstrued and change that language. To read up to a three-year recommendation.
I agree with you.
Agreed.
I'll agree with that.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, yeah.
I would just question that, that it gives a lot of power to the towns.
Gives a lot of power to who?
The towns negotiating position when it comes to hiring. Which is fine, but.
But that's where the power should rest.
Yeah, I would agree. Definitely needs to be a check and balance on that though.
On what point? Check and balance as far as what goes?
As far as going the hiring process, so.
If the town.
There are potentials for. I would be hard-pressed right now to think of an example. But something, I, I just, I just understand where all the powers reside. I just want everyone to understand that. By making that decision, we definitely put a lot of power into what we can and can't do in hiring it. And I don't know if that's going to hurt us in the long run. I really don't.
I don't know about that because as, as the legislative body for the town and the representative. Of the town and the, in the body that makes, not the legislative body, the executive body, right? Um, uh, of the town and the ones that have to make these decisions. I would think we would want to put ourselves in a strong position rather than a weak position.
Absolutely.
Agreed. I would agree with that. I just want to make sure that there's no room for any abuse in that language.
But, but the, the authority is there with the town administrator anyway.
But that's, that's confusing to me. Why would we? Why would we not want to position ourselves with our strongest foot forward? Why would we not be, want to be able to dictate the terms of an appointment? We are the, we are the hiring authority. We are, we are the ones who are giving someone a job. Why would we want to pigeonholes, pigeonhole ourselves into a position? That we have to have three-year appointments and not give ourselves the discretion to work within, A. The best interests of the town, B. The interests of the employee. You could have an employee that doesn't want a three-year, of the three-year appointment.
Those are all very good points, Mr. Andrew. I do agree with it. I, I merely was, was wanted to caution us to just appreciate exactly what position that puts us in. And what authorities we're, we're doing, where we're attempting to change.
Certainly a fair consideration. Mr. Zora?
Yes, Mr. Chair, correct me if I'm wrong, but the upcoming town meeting that keeps getting postponed. There's language with the charter study committee that with the super majority, it overrides the town administrator. Uh, recommendation, we have not had town meeting, so if we're sticking with the. The town administrator's current recommendation with the one year. Versus nothing, I think we should move on with the one year, in my opinion.
Yeah, Mr. Kadim, quick question?
Yes.
Did you have a conversation at all with Mr. Abelson as to uh, what you were considering? And that if the choice was a one-year versus a three-year, you know, what your intent was and, and what he would be satisfied with?
Uh, we, we had a conversation this, this evening, but we've, we've been in commerce, we've been in discussion, significant discussions for over a year. Leading, well, actually more than a year leading up to his, his last reappointment and the expectation, so. Uh, again, a lot of its personnel issues, and I know folks, again, I, I don't, I don't know where this whole one-year leaked out. To, to get to people, because again, like I said, my, my, uh, my decision wasn't made until about, you know, four thirty. Um, I had a conversation with Mr. Abelson. But unfortunately, there's a lot of personnel issues and nuances that go, that get involved that the average person is not privy to. Um, and quite frankly, it's not my, um, you know. It's not the way I do businesses is to conduct, you know, personnel matters out in a, in an open meeting, so. You know, the board is aware of the personnel matters. I, I think the board fully understands the direction that I'm, I'm looking to go in. You know, I would, I would say with individual conversations, I think any board member would be hard-pressed to say that they were surprised by this or that they disagreed with what my recommendation was. Based on individual conversations now, whether, whether that's, those opinions differ depending on who's speaking to whom. Um, I can't speak for that, uh, but again, I, I think, you know, just to be clear and just to get back to the point. You know, if it's a one-year appointment, that's my recommendation. If we're looking to do something based on a three-year appointment, my, my appointment as of right now is not to reappoint Mr. Mr. Abelson.
So we have a one, we have a one year.
On the floor.
We have a one year on the floor right now. You know, I, the way I see it is. You know, we need to take a vote as to whether or not we'd like to continue on with the, with the one-year reappointment. Of Mr. Abelson here. You know, certainly some, you know, some consideration going forward on the. On the, on the wording within the. You know, within, within the town charter. I think consistent with what we just had last year, uh, with it being a one-year. I think it is, you know, Mr. Abelson's position and, and. You know, for, for the next year and to keep him on board is, is certainly adequate for him to continue to. Try to, try to, you know, prove himself within that role. You know, and hopefully, you know, we have this discussion. My, my personal opinion is hopefully we have this discussion in, you know, a year and maybe it is a three-year discussion. Or you, should I say up to a three-year discussion, but you know, it's been, given where we've been over the last year and, you know, what we've been. Dealing with, I think, you know, I would certainly agree that I think one year would be. You know, would be the reasonable appointment for, you know, Mr. For Mr. Abelson. Is there anybody else that has any other comment before we go to a vote? Okay, we'll start with a roll call vote, please. Again, Mr. Petronio.
Adam Petronio, aye.
David Viera, aye.
Zora, aye.
David Andrew, aye.
Justin Sullivan, aye. So, Mr. Abelson receives a one-year reappointment. Okay, item C. Accept the resignation of Lieutenant Alexander Schlagader as firefighter of the town of Seekonk.
Mr. Chairman, we received a letter of resignation from Mr. Schlagader. He's accepting the position with CVS Corporate, so I, I want to wish him well in his, his new adventure. Endeavor, I should say, or adventure, by the way. With, with all the COVID stuff, it may be an adventure.
Both, right?
Sure will be.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Thank you for your service and good luck in the, on your new adventure.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Good luck, Lieutenant Adam Petronio, aye.
David Viera, aye.
Zora, aye.
David Andrew, aye.
Justin Sullivan, aye. Good luck, Mr. Schlagader. Item D, accept the resignation of Carol Ponson as community liaison for human services.
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask that the board accept the resignation of Carol Ponson as the community liaison for human services.
Motion. Second.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Petronio.
I'm sorry, am I missing something? What item are we on?
We're on item D.
You didn't, you didn't get the updated. You were looking at the draft.
That's what I'm looking at. Apologize. It wasn't, I didn't get a chance to print it. Good.
All right.
Back on point.
Back on, we have Mr. Petronio and Mr. Vier done.
Aye, David Viera.
Zora. Zora.
David Andrew, aye.
Justin Sullivan, aye.
And thank you for your service, Mrs. Ponson. He rescinds the conditional offer of employment to Helen Connors for the part-time kennel worker position.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask that the board, uh. Rescind the conditional offer of employment to Helen Conder. She's accepted another job position, job offer.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Adam Petronio, aye.
David Viera, aye.
Zora, aye.
David Andrew, aye.
Justin Sullivan, aye. Item F, rescind the conditional offer of employment to Scott Burns for the full-time position of communications director.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask that the board rescind this offer of employment to Scott Burns for the full-time position of communications director. Just going through some background information and having further conversations with Mr. Mr. Burns. He is, he has asked that he, his name be pulled from consideration.
Okay.
So moved. Okay.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Petronio.
Adam Petronio, I.
Chris Zora.
V R I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Item G, vote to continue to endorse Save a Pet Society.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Petronio.
Adam Petronio, I.
David V R I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Item H, vote to allow the town administrator to accept gifts monetary intangible donated by Save a Pet Society to the Seco animal shelter during the year twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Adam Petronio, I.
David V R I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Item I, Comcast contract negotiations. So in lieu of bringing the Comcast folks in, we have Mr. Huey gone from KP who handles the Con- the Comcast contracts. The basic premise tonight is that we identify with Mr. Huey all the items that we'd like for him to negotiate on the town's behalf. Uh, and he will insert that along with uh wording from uh into the town-side contract to Comcast and negotiate that, negotiate those items with him, with them. Is there anything I missed on that, Mr. Kadim?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, that's that's right. Just um just kind of ra- wrap it up. Five percent gross annual revenue is currently the cap. That's where we're at. That's what Comcast has offered us. Uh, we received a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the capital items. Um, that's a request that the board has felt uh along with TV nine is um acceptable moving forward. Um, and that's also with what Comcast had Comcast has offered us on their initial proposal. Um, then it was just some uh the discussion about uh the length of the contract. Um, I know at an earlier uh meeting that the board was, I think, was leaning towards a a ten-year contract. Um, we had discussed some senior discounts and then also the uh language for license compliance and enforcement tools. Which Mr. Huey had outlined that currently exists in our um expiring contracts and it was included in Comcast's contract, but um and speaking with Mr. Huey, he he has a typical contracts format that he he typically uses for this type of negotiation. So I'm more more than likely will be utilizing his contracts.
Great. Um, also, within that, uh, Mr. Kadim, is there?
Our service, right? The service center.
Yeah. So if we can either get it at like a Best Buy or whatever, whatever makes it, whatever's manageable to both sides, but if we can get a customer service center here in town, that'd be great.
So do you want to open up to Attorney Hugh and and maybe he can talk a little bit, especially with the uh the service center, what he what he's seen? Um, I know he's he's talked a little bit about it during the um, the public hearings.
Yep, please. Mr. Hugh.
Uh, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, uh, Mr. Kadim. Uh, yes, what I've found with Comcast is that uh they have been agreeable by and large to uh what we call a third-party vendor arrangement. If they don't want to continue to maintain a local service office in the town, they are shutting these down. They're regionalizing them. But there are third-party vendor agreements with places like Best Buy and maybe some other uh large retail organizations too. So I think that's possible. Senior discount, uh, we will get that. We'll get a side letter. Uh, it will, you probably have a senior discount applicable right now in the currently effective license, and it will likely be the same letter. Uh, it's not binding on Comcast. It's not part of the agreement. It's the best you can negotiate with Comcast or any cable company. They say it's a rate obligation. We can't regulate rates. So they are willing to do that, to continue doing that. We ought to be able to get one of those as well, a senior citizen side letter. Ten-year term, uh, it's your pleasure. I recommend ten years. You can make it less if you want. I think ten years is best to get the most amount of capital out of ten years. Uh, you'd get uh ten years, you'd get the hundred and seventy-five. If it's five years, you'd get half of that. Uh, and then liquidated damages, as Mr. Kadim said, uh, they're already in the current license and uh we will get those in our renewal license as well. Uh, I think that uh this is going to be relatively easy negotiating the financial terms we already have. So what I'm gonna suggest is I'll prepare a draft and I'll send it to Comcast containing all of these provisions in it. Uh, I can negotiate with them and I'll send a periodic messages, emails and reports to Mr. Kadim, telling him how we're doing. Mr. Hugh, just a question with regards going back to the liquidated damages. Are those are the damages that are in place? Are they stock damages, like stock amounts that you find in other communities? Is it state-regulated? Is it something that we want to evaluate as, you know, as a board here in town? Can you speak to that a little bit? And then the process in which we have to at least allow the citizens to submit complaints and there's things that we need to do here to expedite the process? Certainly, uh, Mr. Chair, the uh, your license has liquidated damages, first of all, are not regulated by anybody. Uh, they're a matter of contract. They are permissible and they're widely recognized in certain types of contracts such as cable licenses and contracts with utilities. Uh, they provide that if there is a violation of certain provisions of the license, there will be a basically basically a fine each day until the violation is cured. Uh, there is no set uh standard or protocol for how much liquidated damages should be per day. It's typical to find them between a hundred dollars a day and fifty dollars, sometimes a hundred and fifty a day. Yours are quite high. Yours are five hundred today and three hundred today and two hundred and fifty a day. I always say that the the amount of the the liquidated damage, the amount of the penalty, the amount of the fine is not uh important. What's important is that they be there because they will serve as a positive incentive for the cable company to correct any license violations. Um, what is the process if there is a violation? Let's say, uh, somebody lives on a street uh and they're within the density obligations of the license to get cable service delivered and Comcast doesn't do it. That person would make a complaint to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen would raise it at a meeting and they would send a letter to Comcast saying, we believe you are in violation of a particular section of the license, three point one, three point two. And we ask you to come before the board or submit us a letter within thirty days explaining whether you believe, whether you agree with our determination that you're in breach, and if so, how long it will take you to fix it. If Comcast can't fix it, and the board, by the way, can establish a deadline. You can say, fix this within thirty days, fix it within sixty days. It has to be reasonable and relate reasonably to Comcast's ability to do this because if it's winter time and they're not gonna be able to move construction equipment out and dig holes in the ground, then it's not reasonable to say you gotta do it and fix, uh, you know, uh, uh, some kind of construction problem or uh line extension problem in two or three weeks. So the board gets to determine the deadline. And if Comcast cannot sufficiently comply with the deadline, then the board makes a determination that there is a breach and the liquidated damages kick in back to the date of the original letter at a hundred dollars a day, two hundred, three hundred, four hundred dollars a day, whatever it is. I've seen uh liquidated damages imposed maybe about three or four times over the last twenty-five years. They really work well. Uh, the cable company, it's not so much the money. It's the bad publicity and the ill will and the public shaming that a cable company has when they go before Board of Selectmen and get told that they're not violating their license and they're gonna be fined. So this is a powerful enforcement tool. Uh, and I always insist on putting them in licenses and your next license will have these in them, and that's how they work. Excellent. It, I guess with all that included here, um, you know, this will also tie with you, Mr. Kadim. Yeah, I think it it's useful or beneficial that we make this process a little bit more accessible. As you know, that there's always, you know, especially recently with everybody being home and having more and more issues, so to speak, with uh with Comcast. Um, some of them are in their control, some of them are not, as we know, but giving them an outlet in order to I guess, get some help if they're not getting satisfaction on their own from, you know, working with Comcast customer services. There's, is there a form that we can put together and have that put on the town website that a resident could click onto and in in order to simplify a complaint process for him, I guess. And I guess the first question is to you, Mr. Huey, is there a particular kind of form that we need to have put together? And then the second question is to Mr. Kadim. You know, can we take that information and have that put up on the on a town website? Uh, I haven't, I haven't seen any of those forms, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, so it, uh, but, uh, so I'm I'm not aware of a a template or a format for such a form, but clearly it it could be done. Okay. It's a good idea. Mr. Kadim?
So no, I was just gonna say that, so, uh, Attorney Hugh, it it there's nothing that precludes us from having a form, right? Uh, because the process is is outlined in the uh contract in terms of the the steps and and the complaints that you know, as we receive the complaints and if we elevate it to Comcast, how it should be handled.
That's correct. There is nothing that would preclude such a form. The the form is a a form of communication, just like an email or a letter. So uh, the board can act on uh a report in the form. The board could act on an email, on a letter or on somebody coming in before it at a meeting and giving an oral complaint about non-compliance.
Yep.
Any of those would work. Any of those are all lawful.
Mr. Chairman, the only, the only thing I would, I would caution is is obviously that if we draft the form, that we should clearly articulate, you know, what, um, I guess, what what issues are able to be considered uh in a violation of the contract. So, um, as you know, fo- folks will be complaining about rates, which we don't have any control over. So I I think it would be good if we're gonna move in that direction, just to really identify um what violations look like.
Agree. I it it should be, is it, is this a, you know, based on the wording and what what it's allowed? Yes, I I think you say, check the, you know, check this box. Is this a service issue that, you know, has not been satisfied or, you know? They've not mean, they've not come out to fix a maintenance issue or whatever, but yeah, I I think that's, I agree with you, you know, because otherwise you're gonna get everything from, you know, I lost my cable last night to you know, my internet was spotty, you know, at a peak time or whatever, but various other things are maybe not necessarily within anybody's control. But, um, but if you, if it's a specific form of, hey, you know, these are the issues in which we can submit a complaint for. I think giving the, given the public and given the residents access to that, you know, so that they at least know that they have an outlet, potential outlet to to seek some help that they're not getting satisfaction, and I think that's important for the residents. And and those topics are all identified in section twelve point three A. There are five separate sections of license violations that would give rise to liquidated damages. Okay. So I I think in the process here, uh, Mr. Kadim, I guess, as we finalize this contract here. Um, if we can start to work on that, I'm happy to work on it with you or, you know, with Miss Days and you know, put something together. Yeah, I think it's, I think this is an important thing for the residents, just so that they have that part of it. Are there any other um things, any other comments that some of any of the members have with regards to the Comcast contract? Okay, seeing none. Is there, Mr. Kadim, you're good?
I'm good.
All right, Mr. Hugh. So what's the process here? You're you're gonna need, now need to put together your contract, put together a meeting with uh Comcast? Which, uh, yes, it's a rough timeline, rough, of course. Yeah, well, I, I can certainly get a license ready in a week uh and send it to Comcast. I, the question is, uh, for Mr. Kadim, um, do you wanna have, uh, do you want me to just negotiate directly with Comcast? Do you wanna have a role of participation? Do you want other uh members like TV nine or some of the negotiating team? You want them to be present at a meeting with Comcast, or how would you like me to proceed with that?
Um, I I would, I guess my recommendation to the chairman is, is if it's okay with you, um, you know, I could give me the flexibility to work with Mr. Hugh. I mean, I mean, some of the conversations I probably don't need to be in on, but some of the, some of them might, you know, if they get a little bit, um, you know, questionable, I should probably just be on there. Um, and then I would just say, if we can limit it to who it is, so we don't have to do, um, would we, because we would, would we have to post? Is that, I guess that would be the only thing if if we have individuals that were originally?
I, my opinion is, and my is yes, and my advice would be that you do post it. It looks like a subcommittee of the town, so we don't want to run into any open meeting problems. So let's always err on the side of caution.
Yeah, but that's, that's the, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah, yeah. So I I, if if there any other member that they don't have an issue with it, I I would say I'm fine with you sitting in on that, Mr. Kadim, on our behalf. Um, on the board's behalf, because we've gone through this whole process that this contract was to be negotiated through this Board of Selectmen, so um, as our representative, that would be my recommendation. Does any other member have any objection to that?
And there's, there's not a whole lot. I mean, we've, we've, I, we've narrowed down the the items, so.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm gonna say it'll take one meeting with Comcast. Okay. And then some fine-tuning, tweaking of language and that sort of thing. Uh, but I I don't think there's gonna be much to negotiate about. I think Comcast is gonna be agreeable to renewing the license under the current financial terms, and we may have language changes to to talk about, but I don't see any big issues, quite frankly. All right. Very good. So, Mr. Hugh, I have to say, you know, be in touch with Mr. Kadim on it and you know, thank you for your efforts. Uh, you're most welcome, Mr. Chair. Will do, and uh, good evening, everyone. Sean, I'll be in touch with you shortly.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, good night. Item J, consider accepting the mass development funds for Brownfield's remediation recoverable grant for Attleboro die work site located at thirty-six Maple Ave and authorizing the town administrator to sign the award letter. Mr. Kadim?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna turn it over to um, Ms. Miller and then uh, Mr. Auburn to just talk a little bit about that. Uh, be both, but before I do, I know I sent out the um notification to the board, just letting them know that we did receive the uh the award. I I do wanna say that it was a very competitive award and there was limited funding, so I wanna you know, just take the opportunity to recognize the hard work of, uh, you know, uh, Ms. Miller and and Mr. Auburn uh, working with the consultants to to continue and stay on top of submitting um grant applications. Uh, you know, we didn't, we didn't, we weren't successful last year, uh, but again, we we were able to turn it around and get some uh some grant money, so uh, they continue to do a phenomenal job with that site, trying to get it uh cleaned up and then also uh prepared to try to get it uh redeveloped.
Great. Ms. Miller?
Thank you. I appreciate that, Sean. So we're very excited to be here tonight, talking with you about this. Um, as Sean indicated, it was very competitive. Only five communities in Massachusetts were awarded. Uh, we had one, and there were one point five million funds available. Um, so this was you know, quite an honor for Seco to be chosen. Um, and, you know, we're still waiting to find out about the EPA grant money as well. Um, hopefully, we'll hear about that in the next few weeks. This is at least a starting point for us with the remediation efforts, and I think DEP um and mass development recognize that this is gonna be an an ongoing project with multiple phases for remediation and for us to move towards redevelopment, we really need um some of this remediation to start with those um impacted lagoons. Um, so we're we're excited that we're at this stage tonight and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about you, the grant or kind of where we are in the process.
All right, all right. Mr. Auburn, do you have anything?
I don't really have anything else to add. Just wanna like, thank Mr. Kadim for the acknowledgement and Jen for all her hard work. She was really the kind of tip of the spear on this. Um, you know, this is another step in the process of getting the site back online, getting it to redevelopment and ultimately deciding, you know, kind of what we're gonna do with the site, both the the portion of the site where the mill was located uh, as well as the open space that runs along the river. Uh, it's a, I think it's a great opportunity for the town uh, and kind of one of those projects that I I'm excited to work on and continue working on.
Excellent. Thank you. Great work by both of you. Uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the uh, to accept the grant.
Seconded.
All right. Is there any other discussion?
So this is a, uh, Mr. Chairman, so through you, uh, so this is a quarter million out of, is what we we got for this Brownfield project plus just wanna clarify, other funds?
Current, uh, do you want me to answer that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the the grant itself that we just received is for a quarter. So the the grant itself that we just received is for a quarter of a million. And then it's, we are are still waiting to hear in terms of the EPA funding through, so the federal Brownfields program. If we are selected for that, that would be another 500,000 towards the remediation efforts specifically. We've already received, obviously, assessment monies for both mass development and EPA for this project specifically for Atterboro die works. The assessment portion is complete. And that's why we're moving on to remediation efforts. And we're hoping partway through the remediation efforts that we can start looking at redevelopment prospects.
And just to add to that, I just, you know, I think those numbers just kind of highlight the level of contamination that we're dealing with out there. And I think we're glad to have the opportunity to hopefully marshal the mass development monies as well as EPA monies.
Ms. Miller, can you refresh me? I thought you had mentioned it at one point. I could be mistaken. What's the total scope estimate of the remediation work that needs to take place at this site?
Right now, we are focused in terms of remediation, we're focused strictly on the lagoons and hoping that once the lagoons are remediated, that we can find or bring in some interested parties for redevelopment and as part of that redevelopment, they would take on the cost of the building area, so the industrial footprint. So kind of holding aside the industrial footprint, we're looking at ballpark between 750 and a million for remediation of just the lagoon areas. And that's really, that's really our biggest hurdle, was that that's the most contaminated area outside of Mill Canal, which is off property, but still part of the impacted area.
Yeah, so that's the extra 500K will at least, you know, will help put a serious dent in what really needs to be done.
It will, and even with the 250, we've had the conversation with mass development that this is a multi-year project. So if for some reason the federal grant money didn't come to fruition, mass development is aware that we will be seeking grant funding each year to continue to move forward with the grants for the lagoon areas.
So from that aspect, I think it represented, represents a significant buy-in by mass development in addition to the support that they've given the town throughout the the process, going back to even before Jen and I were here, I think.
Yes.
Excellent. Great job. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, Mr. Zora?
Just got a quick question. Maybe Sean or Jen can answer this. With the Pond Street Bridge on the horizon for knockdown reconstruction, will that help us in any way secure more grant funding? I know it's a little bit upstream. Will that, will that help it anyway? With the state getting more grants to clean that that area up in with the stream?
Not, not with, not with the Pond Street Bridge, no, unless Jen, unless you know something that I don't know.
I was, I think it's a dynamic question, because it it kind of depends. So I think we're looking at these as as two separate things. But with the the dam that is associated with the Atterboro die works site that creates the pond, that will play into the Pond Street Bridge project. And so I don't think we have contamination issues that we're focusing on for Pond Street Bridge or for the dam, but potentially there are other state funds available that would help us with that project because of the dam and because of it being a riparian corridor that's been impacted by industrial use.
On the dam portion, not the, not the actual bridge. Is that right?
For the bridge, there there are state monies through DER that we've, we have applied for in the past and can apply for again.
I think my my rationale was when the redoing the pylons into the into the riverbed, it may stir up a little bit contamination going downstream and moneying up the waters a little bit. So I don't know if that would help us out. I receive a more grant money to to help out Jen and her cause, or I think that was the angle.
So that's a very valid point. There are definitely contaminated sediments all along Ten Mile River, but that's considered background because it is caused by upstream activities from industrial pass. So it wouldn't impact the project proceeding. But so, for example, DER, the monies that we've applied for but weren't awarded in the past for Pond Street Bridge and, you know, an ongoing program that has annual grant applications, that is focused on improving riparian corridors. So if we can angle the Pond Street Bridge project such that we're improving the corridor and making it better habitat in the process, then yes, there are there are other programs that could help offset the cost.
Look, so that's next on our agenda then. Thank you very much, Jen.
Sure.
So, so these are all impact studies, Jen?
For Atterboro die works, no, we've moved beyond assessment. We're, we're looking at remediation now, so this would be actual cleanup.
Right, but for the Pond Street, so you got multiple questions embedded in this. Actually, you know what? I don't want to derail this. This is
You know where we are, Adam.
I recognize it. I think you know where I was going to ask anyways.
Fair enough. If there are no other questions with regards to this, you know, to accepting this grant, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, is is the motion to include allowing me to sign off to submit the grant?
Yes, that was, that was included on this.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and seconded.
So it's been seconded. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Petronio.
Adam Petronio.
David, you're right.
Chris, all right.
David, you're today.
Justin Sullivan, I.
Thanks again, Jen and John. Great job on this.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, you too. I am K, considering accepting a hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant from Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency for four gas meters along with training system in the amount of 11,857 dollars for the Seacom Fire Department.
Mr. Kadim. Mr. Chairman, I would turn it over to Chief Rave.
Thank you, Mr. Kadim. Good evening, everyone. The Fire Department was awarded a grant from MEMA. It's an HMEP grant, as Mr. Sullivan stated. The amount is for 11,938 dollars. There was an adjustment made since the agenda was printed. We're getting three multi-gas meters and a training system for that. Those gas meters will help us identify flammable liquids, flammable gases, as well as carbon monoxide and hydrogen sulfide. We're also getting Class B foam, which is flammable, flammable liquids firefighting foam, and also four single gas carbon monoxide meters as well. Those carbon monoxide meters will go on the first in bags on the rescues in the engines, and they'll run constantly, and then we run to a house or a building to which we respond, and they will help us identify if there's any carbon monoxide that may be present. I'd like to thank Captain Michael Ball for his work on this grant. He did a great job in in getting the applications in and identifying the equipment that we needed.
Great. Do I have a motion?
No more.
Seconded.
Any, any discussion?
Um, we're assuming the financial, what does this add to our financial costs?
So this grant is a reimbursement style grant, and there is no match.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, roll call vote, please, Mr. Petronio.
I'm turning away.
David, you're right.
Chris, all right.
David, you're today.
Justin Sullivan, I. Thank you, Captain Burke and Chief Rave.
Thank you.
Nice job, guys. Item L, consider the mobile integrated healthcare program. Mr. Kadim.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Rave and firefighter Goodwin, who's the, also the EMS coordinator.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Kadim. The mobile integrated healthcare program is a COVID-19 specific waiver program that is sponsored through Sturdy Memorial Hospital. Seacom, along with four other communities that we have our medical control doctor, Dr. Thornton, based out of Sturdy Memorial Hospital. She sets all the protocols for our paramedics and our licensing for our paramedics. She applied for and received a approval through the Massachusetts Emergency Medical Services Office to develop a mobile integrated health program for COVID-19 patients. And the way the program would work would that people that are seen at Sturdy Memorial Hospital and then diagnosed with COVID-19 and symptoms, but they may not be sick enough to be admitted to the hospital, or they may not choose to be admitted to the hospital because of the no visitor policy. Those people would be citizens of the town of Seacom, and Sturdy Memorial Hospital would then contact firefighter Goodwin, my EMS director, and we would make appointments to have a paramedic from the fire department make a visit to the house. There is a whole series of protocols that have already been established through the, through the program, and that paramedic would follow those protocols and actually in be in communication with a doctor at Sturdy Memorial Hospital during the, during the visit. Sturdy Memorial Hospital has offered to compensate the town of Seacom for each visit. It would be a two-hour visit, and it would be a 160 dollar fee that the town would receive from Sturdy.
Seems pretty much a win.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, right now, the program's been in existence since April, and with the increased number of COVID patients that they're seeing now, is more of a demand. So Dr. Thornton has been in touch with us recently. She's been in touch with Tim, and Tim has worked very closely with her. In fact, the one recent home visit that I allowed Tim to go on with Dr. Thornton resulted in a gratitude of beyond measure, a thank you letter from the woman that was seen, and she had nothing but praise for the Seacom Fire Department, the paramedics, and the Sturdy Memorial Hospital program. Yeah, that's so typically within the six to 10-day timeframe after being diagnosed is the timeframe where the hospital would ask us to check on these people. And currently, if, you know, no one is available from Seacom, if we weren't doing this, they would quite possibly send a paramedic from another community, and I just think that we should be having our paramedics check on our residents.
So, Mr. Chair, can I?
Hold on, I've got Mr. Viera. He had his hand up. I'm going to go to him first, please. I'll get to you, Mr. Andrew, next.
Chief, Chief Rave, question is to you. Do you plan on using off-duty personnel on overtime to do this or the on-duty personnel?
Yes, they would be hired as a detail. We have EMS details, so they could be hired as a two-hour detail. They would, they would be given CAR six and they need PPE, personal protective equipment, and as well, Sturdy will allow us to dispose of that used personal protective equipment with the hospital.
Okay, will that be one individual responding or two?
It'll be one.
One individual.
Yes.
Doesn't their contract need four-hour minimum?
No, for fire detail, it's four hours. EMS detail is two.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So I've got a few concerns with this, and forgive me, I understand, and please, the concerns that I have, don't misconstrue them to be me not recognizing the the public benefit that I, that I see this does provide to residents. But what I see is, has, this is, so I have issues with the reimbursement from Sturdy Memorial Hospital. I mean, we have, there's existing ambulatory services that could service patients that if they need to be transported to the, to the hospital to be seen by doctors or by anyone else. A reimbursement of 160 dollars for the use of town vehicle doesn't compensate the town for the expenses for that vehicle and for our, and for our staff. Now, I realize that the the paramedics would be getting a detail rate, but again, they're getting a detail rate, the hospital is using town personnel, town equipment to then bill residents, whatever rate that Sturdy is going to bill them, using our personnel and our equipment without reimbursing us proportionally. And it's not about it being a money grab. It's every single resident out there pays for our equipment, and they pay for the services. And yes, they, we want to service everyone however we can. But there's so much screaming out there about tax, taxes rising and the use and the use of equipment and not being reimbursed appropriately, or not, or not getting the bang for the buck, so to speak. Well, this, this to me, and looking at it, 160 dollars for the use of town, town vehicles to go do house visits to just individuals who are sick, and I get that. Please, don't, don't misconstrue where this is coming from. But it in no way compensates the town and the residents for the expenses that are incurred.
So with the with the 160 dollar fee, the firefighter doing the detail, it would be 100 dollars, and then 60 dollars would go to the town. If it went beyond two hours, Sturdy would compensate the hourly rate beyond two hours. As far as the rate, the rate.
Worse for me, because I was initially reading this as it being 50 dollars per hour for, for the, for the employee, for the, the paramedic, and then 160 dollars from the town. Well, you just told me is that, or what I heard, if I heard you correctly, is that it's a total of 160, 100 of which goes to the employee and 60 which goes to the town. Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, you did.
So even worse, we have vehicles that cost us 30 to 40,000 dollars a year. We're going to be driving, I'm sorry, we have vehicles that cost us 40, 50,000 dollars that that we would be using, because I'm assuming this is not using an ambulance or or, or, or an engine or anything, correct?
Yep.
We're going, we're going to be using a 2007 Ford Taurus.
For now, until that vehicle breaks down and we have to go purchase another vehicle, because now we're adding mileage, gas on that vehicle. So I'll go, I'll go back to the stance that we've got a 40 to 50,000 dollar vehicle that we're going to be driving around town to to do this service, which, again, don't misconstrue the point of my, of the reasoning of my comments. But and getting reimbursed 60 dollars for the wear, tear, and abuse of that resident-owned vehicle to provide a medical service that should be provided by hospitals and doctors.
Mr. Viera.
Okay, so along the lines that Mr. Andrea is talking, first of all, Chief, and maybe you'll agree with me, I don't know, maybe you won't, but this is the wave of the future. You're going to see this happen more and more with people without patient operations, things of that nature. So again, I'm sure this is kind of like testing the waters, so to speak. But I'm not so sure, and Chief, maybe you have the answer to this, that some of this cost can't be passed on to the healthcare provider, meaning the insurance, the Blue Cross, the HMOs, the Medicare, so on and so forth. So again, it's all new. If we don't do it, somebody else is going to do it, and I agree with the previous speaker that said, I think it was the chief that said our people in our community need to be serviced by our people. You know, they do pay taxes, and you know what, David, your point's well taken. However, those vehicles are paid for through taxation. If Sturdy's going to give us some monies to offset the cost, so be it. But I think we can still explore the avenue as it relates to the insurance providers and as to what they will pay for, if anything, if we can prove that there's an additional cost.
Chief, unless I'm unless I'm mistaken, the the thing that you, that you, that I see what you're saying, Dave, but the thing that's not being considered is that if we have the contract that we're entering in with Sturdy, we can't turn around and then bill the insurance, because guess who's going to build the insurance? Sturdy's going to build the insurance for our personnel, for our vehicle, at whatever rate they want. And that's the point that I'm having issue with, is that at that point, it's no longer in our hands. We get the 60 dollars for the vehicle, our, our employees get 50 dollars an hour, which is fine, it covers their pay, and it gives them something to take home for working extra hours. But then we've got to now manage on top of all the things I've already said. But then we've got to now manage on top of all the things I've already said. Um, fatigue, burnout, cause they're doing additional hours on a service that's not typical or is new that we'll be introducing. And we're subjecting ourselves to being limited by what sturdy is willing to offer us. So, cause at the end of the day, they turn around and they build the insurance company, whatever they want.
So what's the alternative? We say no and they send somebody in here anyway? I, I don't think so. I think we should ask the chief to do a little bit more in the way of an investigation. And you know, let's support the program, obviously, because like I said, this is the wave of the future. You're gonna see this become more and more popular. I mean, the insurance companies do not want patients in the hospital. They're sending them home. Yeah, chief, maybe you'll agree. The, these people that are home from operations have, in some cases, have no business being home. They're sick people. They need to be in the hospital. The insurance companies will not pay. So we're, they're gonna rely on us more and more to obviously do patient care outside of the hospital.
Chief, I'm gonna come to you in a second here, Mrs. Zora. I'll get to you in just a second. Okay, chief?
Yes. So, so right now, the program that we're talking about is COVID nineteen specific. The waiver from the, uh, Office of Emergency Medical Services with sturdy only allows them to refer. People that have been diagnosed with COVID nineteen that need follow up care, uh, to see if they need to get back to the hospital. Um, there have only been fifty cases in the five communities that are participating in this program. Since April, so it's not a factor of fatigue. It's not gonna happen every day and it's not gonna be a huge moneymaker for the town. It's more or less to, like I said earlier, take care of our residents that have been released and need to be checked up on.
You're misconstruing my statements. It's not about being a moneymaker. It's about the hospital making money and it costing our residents money. And though I agree with you, there may not have been that many cases, but what you've done, you've opened Pandora's box. And you've, and what you're doing with this is you're opening Pandora's box and you're getting a foot in the door for them to then introduce it in the future. Now, I was not saying that I'm not a favor, in favor of the idea. What I'm saying is what I see before us in no way makes the taxpayers whole. And no, and no, it may provide the service. It's a service and, and I still have questions about liability for our employees, right? Uh, and that kind of thing. But it, uh, what I'm saying is, it feels, well, my opinion is that you need to go back to the table with them. And work out the numbers to something that makes sense, cause I can guarantee you. The sixty dollars they're paying us for the vehicle is gonna be charged to the insurance company at eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Chief, would you, uh, this is Tim Goodwin. Would you like me to comment on that?
Yes, please.
So, uh, this is a non-billable, uh, service for insurance that, uh, we're doing. The reason that this was, uh, implemented was because we were finding a higher mortality rate in days six through twelve. Uh, after their, uh, a- after patients left the hospital, they were going home. And they weren't realizing that they were getting so sick, uh, to the point where it was increasing, uh, mortality. This is a, uh, not billed out by insurance. This is, uh, implemented by Dr. Thornton. Who is our medical director and this is to directly to, to try and, and, uh, increase the health and wellbeing of our patients. The, uh, ET three, which is the emergency treat, transport and triage system. Which, uh, dedicate, which dictates the Medicare and, uh, Medicaid payouts for insurance. They do pay out for things like, uh, home healthcare where you go out after someone has hip surgery, for example. And will check up on them and, and do home healthcare after that. This is, uh, not what we are doing. Uh, we would not be involved in that at any time either. It's a seventy thousand dollar. Uh, expense for just to obtain that license with the state, um, and to the ability to, uh, bill insurance. Sixty that we're getting is from sturdy, uh, to pretty much negate our costs. So we can go out there just strictly through this pandemic and, uh, not cost that hundred and sixty dollars is what. They've kind of found that i- is the cost of going out and doing business. And, uh, what they are able to pay without them collecting anything from insurance.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Mr. Zora?
Yeah, I'm fine with the service, the sixty dollars for them to get in the car at the headquarters and drive to someone's house will cover the cost of a, of the car. We have cruisers that go out all day and stay running for eight, nine, ten hours a day and. And you know, our costs get covered by that detail too. Uh, the question I have from probably Mr. Goodwin. If you have to administer, administer drugs or IVs or anything like that, who picks up the cost to replenish those goods to put them back in the ambulance?
Any medications that we give, uh, which typically would be Zofran to kind of help with, uh, with nausea and, and any meds. Uh, would be replaced at sturdy at their cost.
Okay, very good. I'm fine with this.
So now that raises another question, Mr. Goodwin, that means that our person would have to go to sturdy. To retrieve those meds?
Uh, no, sir. We have a, uh, medication cabinet at the station that we keep, uh, medications. Routinely use medications, uh, including the medications that we'll be using in this case.
I understand that, but at some point they've got to be obviously restocked, correct?
Uh, yes, sir. The twenty fifth of every month, uh, we make a trip to sturdy and restock those. And Clinical One, another company, uh, comes in and, uh, it's understood that, that we can get medications delivered through them through sturdy.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So, quick question with regards to sending, uh, paramedic to, uh, to a COVID nineteen patient's house. Is there anticipation that when the car comes back to the, to the station, that that car will need to be cleaned out itself and, and disinfected? Cause you would have to handle our other apparatus or, or rescues?
Uh, yes, sir. We have a UV light, uh, that we use. We, uh, the reason that we were, uh, opting to use CAR six is because it has a separate trunk space. That we can keep everything in away from, uh, the passenger compartment. It would be very easy to zap, uh, with that UV light and wipe down any equipment, uh, relatively quickly. The UV light only takes three minutes, uh, to disinfect anything the light touches and wiping equipment down would be. Something that we routinely do, takes a couple minutes.
Okay. Another question I have, and this goes to, uh, you know, the wellbeing of the paramedics that are, you know, that are making the calls. This was, you know, one of my initial, uh, initial concerns here. Now that we have vaccines in place, I know chief, you've been working on. Um, trying to get our team vaccinated, um, is it, is it to be assumed here that. Um, the paramedics making these calls are gonna, you know, are gonna be the ones, you know, well, A, they're gonna be vaccinated. To protect themselves a- as well while they're doing this. Is there a plan behind that?
Yeah. So Tim and I attended, um, a meeting today at Plainville Fire Department along with North Attleboro. And we're slated to have our people start to be vaccinated. Actually, the people that, some people are gonna be vaccinated as soon as Friday. And then, uh, the rest of the people were scheduling to begin on, uh, the twelfth of January. Um, so it's the police department and the fire department as well. So, uh, as far as extra protection for the paramedics making the calls to the houses. We kind of have a, kind of have a hand up that we don't usually have on a regular call. So we, we go there knowing. Yes, it's COVID positive patient. They're gonna be gowned up, N ninety five mask, goggles and, uh, full protective. Equipment in place before they go into the house and then they're gonna use caution when they come out and dispose of it and, and keep in, in the trunk area of the car. When they leave. So I think that the, the protocols that Tim has put in place ensure us that, um. We're probably better protected than we are on a, a, a routine rescue call, but we don't know. Um, so I think we have the same, um, uh, level of, uh, concern. No matter, you know, if, we know we're going to a COVID nineteen positive house or we know you're just going to a, you know, regular, uh, rescue call.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's just my thing. I just wanna make sure you guys are already at a high level of risk of what you do. Um, during these times as it is, and I just wanna make sure that, you know, the, the people that we're sending, uh, you know, have. You know, started the vaccination process and have received the vaccination process, you know, just out of the best interest of, you know, the health of our firefighters. Yeah, I, I think that's, you know, I think that's important here. Um, yeah, I think at the end of the day here, this is a. I understand Mr. Andrew's point, you know, it, there's.
I'm not certain, by the way, I got a couple more.
You got more?
I got more.
You gotta turn your camera on, man. I can't see. So, um, all right. So then I'll, before I go any further here, I'll turn it back over, Mr. Andrew. Do you have some more comments?
Yeah, I, I mean, I've got a couple of comments to some of the statements that were made. Um, so. If I understand what was said. The, in two thousand sixteen, third most ranked hospital in the state of Massachusetts. Is, uh, for, for profitability. Is willing to, out of their own pocket, give this money and the cost of any medications. And not seek, seek reimbursement to the insurance company? That makes no sense to me. Or their, their, their profitability, which has been documented. Um, if they're giving their services away and not billing the insurance.
One of the reasons for that is, uh, when patients are discharged from the hospital, and these are patients that, that have been discharged from sturdy. If you're readmitted, uh, in, within, uh, I believe it's thirty days with the same, uh, underlying diagnosis. Uh, Medicare won't pay it. Um, so it's worth it for them to pay out of pocket. And have us go out and, and do this.
Further reinforcing my stance.
But this is still.
I am not opposed. I'm not opposed to it. I think we're opening Pandora's box. I think we are, um. Allowing something to, to open itself, but the costs, the reimbursement to the town is not sufficient. There are savings on one end. We're having a, a, we're providing a public service to allow a private. Or, uh, company, cause in the end it's still a company and whether they deem themselves not for profit, for profit. That's a theoretical discussion that can go back and forth, because when you have a company that is the third ranked most profitable hospital. In the state of Massachusetts, uh, how can you really be nonprofit? And then they're, they're tossing the expenses to the town and doing so to avoid having to take on further expenses. By admitting that same patient in the future. My request would be to go back to the table. And get something that makes sense for the town from a financial standpoint, cause sixty dollars does not cover it.
Let me ask a quick question and I'll get to you, Mr. Viera. Mr. Goodwin, you, you put a lot of work into all this. Is there, you think there's room to go back and negotiate? And if you do, how long do you think that is? Or is this what is a standard offering? Um, you know, to communities that they're working with right now?
Uh, this is what every community that is participating is getting, uh, and I've been told that this is, uh, if we choose to participate, this is what we get.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Viera.
And I believe, Mr. Chairman, I believe it was part of the, uh, the application process that was already submitted by sturdy to the, uh, to the state as well.
I, I have to go one step further and say that, um, the PR alone. In our people meeting the residents of the town in need, okay, other than. Uh, in an emergency situation is priceless. You can't put a price on that. And I know where Mr. Andrew is coming from. Um, but again, anytime you have an opportunity to interact with the people of your community. Uh, it's not like it used to be where everybody knew everyone. I mean, you went to school with certain individuals, they taught school. So on and so forth. Today, we have firefighters working for us that probably the first time. And I'm gonna stretch it a little bit, that they came into Seacom was, uh, the day they applied for the job. So it's good to have that kind of PR, that interreaction with obviously the residents of the town. You'll get nothing, and not that we're doing it for that reason, but you'll get nothing but praise for this whole thing. I mean, their firefighters are coming to them to obviously assist them in a time of need.
I'm with you, Dave. I agree with you. I see those benefits. What I am standing back and saying is. We hear year after year, our taxes are going up. What are our services? Why do my taxes go, go up?
David, realistically, this isn't gonna make the taxes go up.
No, no, well, time, timeout.
Going to, you know it like I do.
Using, chief, can you tell me what vehicle we're using for this again?
The Ford Taurus.
So what year was that?
It's a car. It's two thousand and seven car with transmission problems.
Correct. So guess what? We may not be coming for a tax increase, but we're gonna be coming for a free cash or, or a capital transfer to be able to buy another forty or fifty thousand dollar vehicle. It's an expense. It's all I'm saying.
The volume, the volume for this program is not there.
And like, what's that?
I said, the volume for this program is not there. I, I totally agree with Mr. Viera.
It's a foot in the door. You're, you're opening the doorway for it to lead to other things.
But I, I think you, I, I totally understand where you're coming from, sir. But I think you have to decide which, what do we, what do we?
What I said, don't misconstrue my comments about not, this not being a good idea for residents or a good idea for the program. My issue lies solely in a for-profit institution. Benefiting on the backs of our residents by offering the equivalent of zero back. For use of our services, our vehicles that every resident in this town paid for. And that's the, the work that went into the application, the work into the research that has been done. Listen, good job. Nice looking out. You're doing what you need to do. This isn't, this is definitely a start, in my opinion. It does not make financial sense.
Thank you. Mr. Zora, Mr. Viera, Mrs. Zora?
I'd like to end this conversation, but, uh, if we're worried about a Ford Taurus with transmission problems. I'm pretty sure the taxpayers would rather pay for a new vehicle so a first responder can get to any scene without any issues. So forty thousand dollars is meaningless when they're trying to respond to any type of situation. Instead of getting in a car with transmission problems that might not make it out of the driveway.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why I wanna leave it at.
Concerned with five dollar bills or, or on other sort of items and saving twenty dollars on a, on a forty, fifty-two million dollar budget? I mean, really, I, it all goes hand in hand here.
Right. Mr. Viera?
Well, I, you know, I think, you know, I, I'll be the first one to tell you that we need to start tightening our belt and save money. But, but I think when it comes to public safety and, uh, someone's illness, that's the wrong place to start.
Again, again.
Start with other things, okay? Program, let's try it. If it doesn't work, we can always stop it. But you, you know, that Ford Taurus doesn't mean squat in the scheme of things. It's getting the service to the people that need our help.
When you have a multi-million dollar corporation benefiting from us, that's the problem I have.
You're stuck on that, David. They're gonna be there no matter what.
All right. So, gentlemen, Mr. Mr. Andrew, I, I think your point is, your point is well taken, you know. However, again, I, I saw it on the fact that, you know, that, A, this is a service that we have an opportunity for our own. Uh, you know, for our own paramedics to, to provide to our town residents. Is the amount one sixty seem, you know, small in the grand scheme of things? Sure. Um, does it cover our immediate costs, you know, to, to cover the cost of detail and cleaning out the car? Yes, that was, you know, that's an initial thing for me to make sure that we're not losing money on the, on the immediate. Um, on the immediate call itself. It doesn't sound like, you know, if there's fifty cases, according to Chief Rave, since this. Has been implemented going back to April, there's not volume that's, you know, there's not volume of calls that come into play right now. Even, even with the, you know, the high period that we've been undergoing over the last three months. Um, and that's still what's been included here. So the, the wear and tear on a two thousand and seven Ford Taurus is. Not gonna be much more significant than what already, what it currently has. Um, and as long as the safety, my point of view, as long as the safety protocols are in place to protect our, our paramedics that are going on site. I don't, I don't see how, you, you know, as long as we're covering our costs and everything else is in place here. I, I don't see how we're losing, you know, by, by, uh, not doing this partnership. Now that being said. Um, you know, Mr. Vera's point, I think, is, is well noted. You know, you've got, uh, this is probably gonna be the wave of the future, i- i- are these hospitals and, and we certainly. Gonna need to have to take a, uh, take a reconsideration as we get into future agreements in terms of what's the, what's the cost of what we're actually doing. You know, but, um, the end of the day, I think we're, you know, you know, we need to, we need to be able to provide this service. To our, to our residents now, so.
I concur, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any other questions or any other comments? None? Okay. Uh, we have a motion, I believe, down on the floor. And second, uh, if there's no other discussion, I can't see you, Mr. Andrew, so I'm gonna assume you got nothing else. So I'll start with a roll call, Mr. Petronio.
I think it's a good idea to do something, anything, even if it does come at a small cost, at least our department's helping our people. Adam Petronio.
David, I.
Chris, I.
David, Andrew, no.
Justin Feller, and I. Mr. Goodwin, Chief, appreciate the hard work that you put into this. So thank you. Please be safe when you're going on these calls.
Thank, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate the effort that you've taken to allow us to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Tim.
Item M, considering amendment to Article Six of the Fall Town Meeting Warrant, the trackless machine, Mr. Kadim.
Mr. Chairman, before I turn it over to Mr. Lobry and, and Mr. Cabral, just wanted to highlight the conversation that Mr. Cabral, Mr. Lobry and myself had after the last snowstorm. The town had originally decided to go with the trackless machine, versatile machine to do some, some various work around town, but also to focus in on some of the sidewalk cleanup at the last snowstorm, several of our, excuse me, several of our machines broke down, forcing Mr. Cabral and Mr. Lobry to really kind of evaluate what the breakdowns were and, and figuring out whether or not the trackless machines were the ideal machines moving forward for the snowplow sidewalk operations. And I'll, I'll let them speak to that. So my, my suggestion to them was that we have a warrant, warrant article on, for the Fall Town Meeting for the purchase of another trackless machine in the amount of one hundred forty-four thousand, three hundred ten dollars. What they're looking to do is deal with a machine that's is less expensive but more versatile in terms of its ability to maneuver, especially in tight quarters for the sidewalk. And we would be able to purchase three of the, I, I thought it was four, but looking at what was submitted in the language, look, they're saying three, so I'll, I'll ask for the clarification on that, but I thought it was four of the compact track loaders, which would only cost a hundred and sixty-four thousand, so twenty thousand dollars more than the, the trackless machine itself. So we would get three or four, depending on the clarification that comes out from Mr. Cabral, Mr. Lobry tonight compared to that one track, trackless machine. Part of the conversation was to make sure that I know as we decide to move in the direction of the trackless machine was just to make sure that if we were going to move away from the trackless, from the trackless machine, that we ensure that the machines that we were going to replace them with were ones that were going to be long lasting in, in the direction that the, the department for, would, would see it for the, for the foreseeable future, so that we're not constantly moving around with different equipment in terms of, especially for the sidewalk and snow removal portions of it. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Cabral, Mr. Lobry.
Thank you, Mr. Kadim. So again, what prompted this whole discussion that came about was the last snowstorm. We had both our trackless machines, we currently have two, broke down while we were doing our sidewalk operations. So rather frustrating, but part of what we do. One of the trackless machines, the more, the newer one, MT six, is a two thousand and nine machine. It's eleven years old. The other machine is a nineteen ninety-eight, twenty-two-year-old machine. That's the one we're looking to retire. And we've been using these because of their versatility to handle the transfer station mowing at both the transfer station, Florid Avenue and Newman Avenue, roadside cutting and snow operations for sidewalks in particular. This last storm, what we ended up doing is it prompted us, we have been looking for another piece of equipment to utilize in the fleet specifically for sidewalk operations and the following, after that storm we had on the sixteenth and seventeenth, I asked Mr. Lobry and one of my foremen to take a ride up to North Walk Power Equipment, have a discussion with them on equipment that they're currently selling to different communities for sidewalk snow removal. They came back with this machinery, which I believe you all have a copy of. It's the RT forty compact track loader. Looks like a Bobcat. It is a tracked machine, so it's not wheels. It's actually track driven. They are selling these things specifically for sidewalk operations. I believe the day that Mr. Lobry went up there, they sold six to one community and they had another three on order for a different community. The, these particular machines are something we want to recommend and have you consider right now because of the timing of the eventual meeting we're going to have with that trackless machine on the warrant. We are, we really feel that these machines have the versatility, because of the attachments they come with, to at least eliminate the trackless machine we want to retire. I think we'll still have a need for the other machine and to Mr. Kadim's point on the clarification, but the replacement of the warrant article would be for three of these compact track loader RT forty machines to supplement the one trackless machine, newer trackless MT six machine we currently have. That machine currently has a snow blower attachments, a bunch, a bunch of other attachments, including a milling head for road grinding and the, the stump grinder and so on. So we have a lot of money invested in the attachments. We have a need for that machine regardless of the snow operations to some extent. But I feel the town will be better served, in particular with the snow removal operation. And I also want to point out that this, these machines, the three of them, each would come with a snow blower attachment in a V plow along with a heavy-duty bucket in the front. So we would essentially be not be creating the ability to deploy four vehicles instead of two vehicles to try to cover the twenty-five miles of sidewalk we have that much more efficiently. I believe, you know, the warrant article in and of itself is around a quick fix. I provided language to that in, to the amended language. I can certainly go over that if you wanted to, but it was kind of self-explanatory, I thought, with the mock-up I provided to Article Six as it currently stands with the amended language below it with the highlights shown in red. Simple language of change. It is a twenty thousand dollar increase, but I do want to, you know, just stress again, that twenty thousand dollars extra would include three snow blowers instead of just one snow blower. So we, we would be getting attachments for that to make these things of practical use for the town. With that, I'll leave it for questions if you guys may have, and Scott might have a little bit more that he can elaborate on, depending on the questions, because he actually met with the folks up at North Walk Power Equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. I'm going to turn over to Mr. Viera right now. He's going to stand up.
Mr. Cabral or Mr. Lobry, whoever can answer this, and, and I know the answer myself. I gave the answer I thought was the correct answer today. I received a phone call asking why the Board of Selectmen would allow a warrant article on the floor of a town meeting for such an absorbent amount of money with no explanation as to what we were purchasing. In other words, just a trackless machine rather than a, and I don't even know who makes them, but I'm going to use I don't care, any particular type of machine, why we didn't explain the type of machine, the horsepower, so on and so forth. So maybe you could explain it. Hopefully I gave the proper explanation earlier today, but maybe you can explain it a little bit better than I. I explained that it was just a placeholder. There would be more information forthcoming at town meeting, but the individual I spoke to didn't seem to want to accept that for an answer, so. Thank you.
Sorry, you need to.
Yeah, as to why the, obviously the warrant article wasn't in more detail.
As far as horsepower and everything like that, that we mean specific specs on the.
Other than just a, a trackless machine, that, you know, type of machine being model, I guess, or make or, or whatever, horsepower with the attachments and all that good stuff. So maybe you can explain why it was, again, I just felt it was because it was a placeholder. We would amend the warrant article on the floor of town meeting and give the detail that was necessary.
Well, I believe that is the case, that if there are questions, we can answer them on the floor.
I guess I, I'll jump in. So typically, we don't put the horsepower and all the specs for the equipment that we purchased, whether it's the vehicles or any of the other equipment that we've, we've got on there. One of the reasons is obviously if we're going out to a bid list, depending on the type of the make and the model that we're looking for, that, that could vary based on price, things of that nature. So, you know, there's, there's, in terms of trying to be consistent, that there's never been, at least since I've been here, any real specs in terms of the equipment that we've put. Now, we, we've provided sample specs on what we've looked to go when we, you know, either before the Board of Selectmen or, or Finance Committee in terms of the type of machinery that we were, we were looking for. But to have it as part of the warrant article, it's never appeared that way.
I, I agree with you and, and I know that, and I'm just obviously trying to clarify it for the people that have some concern. I think the term was used that it appears to be something underhanded going on, which we all know that's not. But some people perceive things when they don't get what they're looking for in the way of information as something underhanded.
So I, I would say this, we, we provide backup information for the articles, like for the trackless machine, we have the cut sheet and spec of the equipment we looked at, along with the attachments, including the snow blower for that particular type of machine. So the trackless machine is that type of machine. We have the supporting documentation behind it that we've kind of provided behind the scenes, if you would. Not, not unlike what we did here with the amended article. I made reference to the compact track loader specifically, not forgetting to make and model, you know, who's, who's the provider. But I, I identified that as a compact loader and I provided a spec sheet for the benefit of the board to have an understanding of what that machine looks like, what its capabilities are. The horsepower, the whole bit is in that supplemental package for informational purposes. You know, a town meeting to get into a spec sheet, it's just not the right place in my mind. It's more a piece of equipment, what is, what are we purchasing it for? Identifying those tasks and understanding what the attachments are. So.
And the other question I was asked pertaining to these pieces of equipment was why aren't we looking at purchasing used equipment? Well, I, I wouldn't suggest we purchase used equipment for all the reasons we know, but the same individual seems to think if we purchased used equipment, we would obviously pay a lot less and get the same amount of use. I, I don't believe that, but again, I'm just passing the question on.
And I, I'd make the opposite argument, saying that if we got used equipment, we, we'd essentially be paying more just in maintenance alone to, to maintain them. You, you, you know as well, as well as I do, when, when people, again, are ready for their equipment, there's a reason for it.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree.
We have a piece of equipment here that we're looking at, that we're going to retire. That's over twenty years old, twenty-two, almost twenty-three years old. So off the market. Mr. Zora, now I'll come to you, Mr. Petronio.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the model that they provided us to Dave ASV, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Terex bought them out as a sister company a few years ago, and we already have a Terex on, on our list anyways, in our inventory.
That, that is correct. These are Terex machines that were bought out by ASV. So the current Terex that we have, the attachments that we have for that machine will fit on these machines as well.
Okay. My next, next question is regarding sidewalks. We've all seen the complaints the last few years, trash barrels knocked over, yards dug up. Is this something we want to pursue in the future? Providing the service. I know a lot of other towns don't provide this service to our residents. They make you shovel, you know, with five-foot winrow at the end of your driveway and sidewalks. I think it's a good service the town offers. They clear our sidewalks. However, I don't know if, if it's still in the taste of, if residents want this to continue, especially those on the that are affected. I don't know if we should send out a survey, but then again, if you send out a survey, how do you target everyone that's on a sidewalk versus residents that don't have sidewalks?
What's your suggestion? Have students that walk to school on, on major roadways that have sidewalks? Walk in the street if residents don't do it?
No, what I'm saying, there's multiple cities surrounding us that it's the homeowner's responsibility to shovel the sidewalks. I don't want to go in that direction, but I'm saying the amount of complaints we get is almost like we throw our hands up. It's a double-edged sword.
The last thing I want is our citizens walking in the street, especially the kids. I mean, we've had too many incidents where they were fatals from people walking in the street.
I, I agree with you, but just some of the complaints we get and the questions and
Well. People. I know the complaints you're talking about and that you're talking about the lawns being turfed and all that stuff. DPW goes back out every spring and repairs any damage that's been done. They're not going to go out there after every storm. Obviously, they can't. It's not cost-effective. But in the spring, they go out and repair the damage. So I, I don't know what the issue is.
Complaints, people want it done, then they complain after the fact if.
Well, that's always the way.
All right. Mr. Petronio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So a couple of questions, Dave, Scott, if you might be the best to answer these. So. I'm no so, I'm, I mean, I've operated equipment and I, and a long time ago, I had some experience with it. These I don't have any with. I'm going to trust subject matter experts that you've done your homework on them. Warranty questions. It seems to me just brief searches and what I've read, two years, two thousand hours is, is a standard. I didn't know if the town would get some other deal. I'm going to ask all my questions and I'll, and then I'll let you dissect them. Purpose, these are all season, if, if I'm, if I'm reading correctly. And they won't be used just for snow removal, I'm going to assume, because they're, they're basically bucket loaders. So the purpose might need some finesse and just so we can understand how they're going to be used. You did list three of them on this. I know that the, there was a point of clarity that Sean was bringing up. I just want to revisit that quickly. You listed three instead of the current track loader of one. And I know the, the purchase price, I understand it's a DL, is, is three, and how did you come to that analysis? And would two suffice as opposed to three? And then that existing machine, you may have said it and I might have missed it, so I just want to revisit what's going to happen with that existing machine that we have that's broken down. And I'll leave it to you guys.
Okay, I'll take one part out. I'm going to take the reasoning that we came behind the three machines instead of the two. With the twenty-five miles of sidewalk, we're constantly looking at ways to improve efficiency, whether it's from an equipment perspective or an operational perspective as far as removing the snow off of the sidewalk. Minimum that we would need to do this efficiently is going to be three of these machines. And then we looked at the cost and with three being close to the cost of the one replacement trackless, we thought that was a good fit. What was one of the other questions regarding attachments?
Warranty question.
So it'd be, I believe it's the three-year, two thousand hours, like you said, so with over three machines, two thousand hours will probably get us past the three years with these machines. Two thousand hours is a lot. So I think we'll be good as far as making it under the warranty. As far as your question regarding attachments and it being a one-dimensional machine, these have the ability to work with stump grinders, brooms for sidewalks, brush cutters, almost everything that the current trackless has, these compact loaders can also provide.
Excellent. And what's the compatibility with existing equipment?
So we have one machine currently that's a sister to this. It's called the Terex brand and we have a brush cutter on there. That's something that we can use constantly. We've also had the need to rent equipment over the last three years with us taking on more and more projects. There is a Harley rake, a grading rake that we've rented probably several times. That's something that we can add to this machine as well. So we won't need, have the need to go out and rent as much.
All right. And then so the current one that you were going to, so we have a compact track loader. Or while we have a trackless machine right now, what, what is going to happen to that? Are we still going to look to repair? That equipment?
We have two of them. One is from nineteen ninety-eight. That one's the one we're going to phase out. That's, it's beyond the point of wasting money on repairs on that. The, the other one is two thousand and nine, which we're still committed to because we have, we just added the stump grinder attachment to it. It works very well. So that machine is going to stay in current use. We have, we're committed with the amount of attachments we have.
All right. I think I do see it.
The nineteen ninety-eight trackless is the machine that we're looking to replace, just for clarity. We're looking to replace that nineteen ninety-eight machine with the brand new, you know, well, in this case here, we want to substitute now for the three compact loaders. But these pieces of equipment would be used year-round. They have similar versatility to what the trackless machine offers, as we've already discussed. And, you know, I just, the, the other machine that we have, that Scott referenced there, which he kind of mentioned was And, uh, you know, I just, the, the other machine that we have, that Scott referenced there, which he kind of mentioned was the sister to these MT40s. It's a smaller version that we purchased and we do currently use that, but we, it's, we, it's used on the building. The senior center, the front walkway at town hall over to the, uh, public safety complex. And a very short section of sidewalk we've done with it to limit the strain on that machine. That machine doesn't have the same horsepower, uh, and wouldn't necessarily be able to cover the mileage of these three that are bigger than the Terex. So just for clarity on the equipment, one of the machine we're looking to replace is the 1998 trackless machine. We would retain all the other pieces of equipment we currently have.
And really quick, I, I believe you answered me, Scott, and I'm just trying to recall what you said. So why three and not two? Why, why was that again? Is it just strictly the cost or was it functionality?
Both. So we, as far as efficiency, we want to clear these sidewalks as fast as possible. So that if school's going to open the next day, or you know, we don't want to put any residents at risk. In order to do this efficiently, we'll need a minimum of two machines on the north end alone and one on the south.
Okay. And then, so, and then that leads to staffing question. So your current staff, as we had an early conversation, you have 17. And this doesn't create any additional need for more staffing, right?
No, not currently. No, we'll be able to, actually with the increased staffing, we can break them off from plowing and, and treating a little bit early and get them on the sidewalks even more quickly.
Okay. I can actually, I see now what, so that type of conversation, obviously you're prepared to brief when it comes to the warrant and the town hall. And that's probably where the direction of any other concerns are going to go. And if you explain it half as well as you just explained it to me, I think, I think it's reasonable. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do this.
I, I think the, the only question I have on all of this is, and this is more procedural. The purchase of the equipment, you know, makes sense to me and for the purpose of it. So it's just more of, we now are on our third continuance of our fall town meeting. I don't know. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna spit bomb, say that we're probably got another continuance or so coming. We're probably gonna, if best case scenario, given the current rates, we're looking at March. Likely scenario could be April. Yeah, it, it, does it make sense just to write instead of amend this on town floor? Does it make sense just to put this on the spring town meeting warrant with, as, as we're making other capital expenditure items at, at that point in time? And just when we get to, whenever we have the fall town meeting, because at that point, once you get out of February, quite frankly, you guys aren't going to see this equipment for snow season anyway. So does it, does it make sense if you get it approved in March versus May?
I, you know, there's a need for the other attachments as well. However, at this point, given where we stand, as you mentioned, you know, we just wanted to bring it to your attention or consideration of not necessarily following the same pattern, pattern we've been doing here, especially when the one, when both machines were down, it kind of left us nowhere. Uh, this is more just making sure that we give consideration. I think it's a better choice for the town's, um, benefit as the end user of this, at the end of the day, to go with these three compact track machines. When we go about doing that, you know, as long as I, I'm on board either way at this point, because chances are they're probably going to be that close together. The, um, extended, um, continuance of the fall town meeting to spring. I just think it's more important that we really inform you folks and the town folks that the better choice, in my opinion, is to go with these machines over the replacement of another trackless.
Can I just?
I can live with it.
Can I point something out real quick, though? I think the whole reason why this is on the agenda is the fact that this is on the fall warrant under Article Six to purchase a trackless machine. And the, and what is being proposed is to modify the existent, the existing warrant article to have it be a, the compact loader instead. So if, if the fall town meeting ta- actually takes place before the spring town meeting, then at town meeting, we'd be considering the purchase of a trackless machine. When everything being presented bef- before us tonight is to go away from that and go with the compact trap loader.
Yeah, I understand. That's why I was just suggesting, uh, at that, call it the fall town meeting floor, you just withdraw the article.
Yeah, I see where you're going with it. You want to withdraw it and just put it in the article for this.
Withdraw and, and you rewrite it so that, you know, that residents can have a, have, have it written where everything is done properly on the, on the town warrant. That's all.
Yeah, it's already written. So in my opinion, I said, just leave it and amend it.
But the only, the only, the only difference is that, you know, people are going to see 144 versus 164. I'll get to you in a second, Mr. Vera. That's all. I, I, it's just more out of, some people are going to want to see it and versus have it, have a motion made on the floor.
Yeah.
So it, it, it's, because to me it's just like it's, it's a timing thing and it's just trying to offer a little bit more transparency. If, if it was, we're having, listen, if we end up for having fall, uh, fall town meeting and on February 3rd, I believe is currently scheduled. Uh, I'd fully support them, you know, because now timing might make a little bit of a difference for a, for a late winter storm. Yeah, for, for them to be able to try to acquire it, but.
These are also all season.
Yeah, but I, I think, I think at, at the end of the day, but I'm just working on the, my, my crystal ball. I'm not saying it's the right crystal ball, eh, by any stretch here, but you know, my crystal balls, it's probably going to be a while before we have a fall town meeting.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you with that. I can still say it's already there. Language is already written. Let's just amend it and get it done and I mean, if someone asks questions, the $20,000 bump, we're getting three machines instead of one.
I know, I know Mr. Vera, but where, where would the, this would go into the fiscal year, the next fiscal year budget anyways, right? This wouldn't go into the current.
This was set to come out of, uh, hold on one second. I have it opening up here.
This was out of the capital improvement, I believe.
Yeah, but it, but then the, so time, you know, when, what per, you know, what, which, which capital is it this year's or is it next year?
The, the spend would have been out of this year.
E- enterprise fund. I was, I was on mute.
The enterprise fund here. Retained earnings.
Yeah, you're right.
So.
Gentlemen, I'd just like to add that these machines are in stock. So if things went through with the February town meeting, which we don't know if it will, potentially we could have them, uh, within a few weeks.
Right. Mr. Vera?
Dave or Scott, how firm is that price? I mean, do we chance losing the price we've got? I realize that they still have to go out to bid, but do we stand a chance to lose the price we've got? If we put it off to the spring town meeting?
But the quote we received is valid through March 30th. So.
What was that? Sorry.
The quote we, we received that's in the amended language there, the 164, 400 is valid through March 30th.
Okay. Is that a 2021 model?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I wouldn't want to lose that price. That price seems to be a, a, a great price.
That, that would certainly factor into this as well. So I, I would agree with you. It's a good point. Okay. Anybody else have any other comment on this? Mr. Zora?
Let's have a question. Uh, Dave, do we have a place to store these when we're, we're not in use? Are they going to be sent out in the weather year round?
Well, currently we'd be, they'd be probably be outdoors part of the time and indoors part of the time. Uh, you know, we don't have a lot of storage as it stands, but we do pull the sanders out in the, uh, summertime. So it would be kind of a 50/50.
I'm making room in my office for one or two of them.
Sounds good.
You don't need an office. Be, be, we, before you folks leave, um, I have a question. But I don't, I don't want to deter from what we're talking about.
All right.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. You have another, so if there's anything else as it relates to this? Is everybody good? Sean, we don't need to make a motion on this, do we?
No.
Okay.
Well, an amendment to the fall town meeting warrant?
No, you can't, you can't open it up. So that the point of the discussion was to whether or not the board want, number one, highlighting it to the board. So the board was fully aware. Um, and then really try to get a consensus of where it is. And then at fall town meeting, you'll, you'd have to make a decision as to what you want to do.
Oh, so we would do it at, on the floor then?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, okay. So if everybody's good with it, it, and.
Who's reading this one?
I believe I am.
Who knows?
It doesn't matter.
No, don't mess it up.
There'll be a reminder. Okay, Mr. Vera, you said you had something else for Mr. Cabral.
Mr. Cabral, Mr. Scott, uh, question, County Street Station. I went by there the other day. There's a bunch of, uh, shingles that have blown off the roof with, uh, with good sized holes in the roof. Um, I understand that you and the fire department are storing, uh, surplus or, or equipment in there. Um, that tells me that the bats and uh, the squirrels or maybe even raccoons, from my understanding, have taken up residency in there again. Are we going to do something to secure that, uh, the eaves and the roof on that building?
We could certainly take a look. We could take a look over there and see what, um, you know, what, what it needs and we don't have a lot of money to spend on that building. It's been kind of an ongoing battle of what do we do with it? We have been using it for coal storage. Um, so not really causing any harm to the equipment that's in there. Um, you know, we'd have to take a look to see if it's leaking through. But I think we could button it up if we had to with tops for now and kind of come up with a solution for that building at some point.
Well, I, I, you're right. And I think we need to talk about that. That should be an agenda item at some point. Uh, because again, it, it's not fair to the neighbors to, uh, start draping a building with tops just to keep it weather tight, so to speak, or have rodents obviously take up residency. So we need to decide what we're going to do with that building, if anything.
I would agree with that.
Thank you.
Yep. Bye.
All right. Thank you. Uh, all right. Thanks, guys. So item N, consider accepting the donation of a foosball table from Cardi's Furniture to Human Services. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Roll call vote please, Mr. Petronio.
I'm turning, I.
David VRI.
Chris Zora, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Thank you to the Cardi's Furniture folks, please. Item O, consider accepting a donation to Human Services gift and donation account in the amount of $200 from Mary McLaughlin.
Don't move.
Roll call please.
Adam, turn your eye.
David VRI.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Thank you very much, Mrs. McLaughlin. Item P, considering accept, consider accepting various donations in the amount of $1,981 to the animal shelter.
Don't move.
Second.
Roll call please.
Adam, turn your eye. Thank you very much.
David VRI.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew, I.
Justin Sullivan, I. Thank you very much to all those that donated. Item Q, continued COVID discussion. Mr. Kadim, do, uh, do we have any current updates?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, Fire Chief, um, kind of touched upon it when he was talking about the, um, some of his, uh, agenda items. But just wanted to touch base with the, uh, board. Uh, sent out an email. Our first responders, um, have, well, we, we've entered into a consortium, uh, consortium uh, with North Attabur and Plainville for our first responders. Uh, so over at, uh, the next two weeks, January 12th through the 15th and the 19th through the 22nd. Um, those that are willing to, uh, receive the vaccine will be doing that. Um, it will include, uh, we would have been talking, uh, internally, uh, Ms. Daze did bring, mentioned uh, initially that, uh, dispatchers were left out as first responders. Um, the governor has corrected that, uh, item, uh, as I believe it was late last week. Um, so they will be, um, involved and included, uh, in those numbers. So part of it was that the state was saying that you needed a minimum of 200, um, individuals that will be willing to take the vaccine in order to be able to receive the vaccines. Uh, so that's why we had to pull it together for, especially with the smaller communities, uh, with other communities to come up with a minimum of 200 vaccines. Uh, so we've done that. Uh, Chief Rave, uh, did do, as he mentioned earlier, uh, a walkthrough. Uh, those vaccines will be issued at the Plainville, um, Public Health, uh, complex there. So there was a walkthrough to, to see how that effort was going to be going on. Uh, the vaccines are going to be, um, on the fireside, we're going to be looking to do the vaccines while the firefighters are off duty. Um, so closely monitoring that.
Great. Thank you. I had, I had a quick question.
Mr. Petronio?
So which vaccine is it? Is it Moderna or Pfizer's?
Um, I, I forget, to be honest with you, I, I forget, um, I mean, I'm not quite, I'm not even quite sure if he even specified which one and it might, it may be both. I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yeah. Okay. So just, just out of curiosity, it's not, it's not really that important. Um, just so you know, I did get the Moderna first shot series, so it's not as bad as everyone thinks. It's actually really small and, you know, it's easy. It's like getting the flu shot. So, um, it's, it's good that the first responders are in. We pulled together this consortium. Happy to hear that.
Great.
Uh, Mr. Andrew. Mr. Andrew, I thought you had something earlier. Sorry.
I didn't. I'm sorry, I was muted.
No, you're all set?
We are right now. No, I'm all set on this item.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Vera?
Yes.
Did you, I thought I saw your hand up.
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
So.
All right.
This is the, the one thing that I did mention last, last time was, Mr. Kadim, if you put any more thought, if you think we need to start gearing up with, um, the, uh, the task force, if you think we're at that point yet or not, um, I don't know if you've had any more thought on that, if you think we're fine the way we are. I know that some of the comments that you've had were that we kind of were going through the first, going through the ropes the first time and trying to learn everything as we went on the fly with the task force made sense. And needing a member of the board of selectmen on that task force at the time. I, and that you kind of felt like we did our learning, learning cur- the learning curve, so to speak, and that we were good for now. Is that still the case?
Uh, it, it is, but I, I thought the, the way we left it off at the last meeting was that we potentially maybe just vote to have one individual uh, pointed just in the case, in the event that there was a, a need for it, but, um, there's, there's no need right now as it, as it currently stands. We're, you know, internally working with Board of Health and obviously, uh, public safety.
Yeah, but along those lines, we also agreed, I believe, that that individual would not be making decisions for the board, but more or less just a liaison, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any progress with the electrical permit? For the vaccines?
I, I missed that. What was that?
Any progress with that, the electrical and the vaccine side?
CVS, um, yes. So CVS, we're, we're still, they, they pulled a, um, the permit, the application and I sent that to the board. I'm, I want to say the 23rd, 22nd and 23rd of December. Um, there was an inspection done, um, on the 30th, uh, the electrical inspection failed, um, and to quote the, the inspector miserably. Uh, so, um, there, there was, obviously there was, there's a, a task list that, uh, needs to be performed. We have not received anything with, um, the electrical inspector. Uh, Mr. Howitt did, uh, representative Howitt did, uh, receive and, and contact the office uh, in regards to just follow up, because I, I think he might've, uh, received a couple of complaints about that not being open. Uh, we did pass that along. Uh, Mr. Abelson and himself were, were talking about, you know, not, just not getting any response back from the electrical contractor from, from CVS. Uh, so he was reaching out to a contact that he had uh, to see if they could kind of just push this along a little bit further. So that's what we're waiting on.
So we don't have a get well date?
No.
Good.
Sean, I, I know you've, um, you've obviously made notification, uh, in seven locations, several locations uh, as it relates to why that facility isn't up and running. Um, if you could again, I, I don't know if it's on the website or not, but, uh, um, obviously out having my papers signed, I'm getting bombarded uh, with questions as to why there's no test site. with questions as to why there's no test site in Seacom and why people have to go out of town and all that good stuff. And, you know, in defense of our, obviously, building inspector, it's not his call. It wasn't his call. That came down directly from the state. But I think, and I don't know how we do it, but we need to make people understand that it's got nothing to do with us. He's taking direction from the state, correct?
Yes and no. I mean, I think, I think what we're telling, we're getting a lot of complaints and we're fielding calls. What we're trying to remind people of is is that we can't turn a blind eye to the building code and public safety, even though it's for public safety, right, and public health. We still got to ensure that the buildings themselves, that people are going to be going in, especially the size of those buildings. I mean, you you know full, full well, if if an electrical fire starts in that and and the door doesn't open up, it's just a death trap. There's no, there's no easy way out of it. So
Right.
We need to make sure that they're meeting the the standard code and the electrical codes. So we've been trying to have those conversations and, and, you know, the more we talk to people, they they tend to understand what we're trying to do. Clearly, if we if we had our drawers, we would, that they, you know, they would be operational by now. We've been working with CVS, trying to contact them, walking them through the permitting process, trying to get the the inspections done. So, you know, I I think, you know, there's a lot of negative PR that's been out there.
Right.
We can't necessarily control that. You know, at the end of the day, we need to, as officials, make sure that we're protecting the community. And that's what we're charged to do. So that's, that's what we're doing. You know, Selectman Sullivan and I have been talking about just the testing sites itself. You know, Representative Howitt did mention that, I believe, the Attabur or or now that, I think it's the Attabur facility is shut down. So Selectman Sullivan and I had talked about just drafting a letter, working with Representative Howitt, see if we can get some additional requests coming through the state to see if there's any other possibilities of opening up additional testing facilities in Seacom. You know, Mr. Sullivan did mention potentially with Target, their pharmacy being at CVS, maybe we can get another testing facility at that location on Commerce Way. There's also maybe see if there's any discussion or even possibility, if we can reach out to South Coast with the the urgent care facility that they have there on Commerce Way, as maybe that being a possibility. So we'll be talking to Representative Howitt to tomorrow, seeing what what the best avenue would be, whether it's a letter or just maybe a a meeting with several individuals at the state level to see what we can do to kind of push that along.
Well, thank you for your effort. Again, blame is being passed, obviously, to us and it's not us.
Yeah, it's extremely difficult. I mean, I wish we could have something here in town and now that, you know, I just found out today that Attabur gets closed. The closest place somebody has to go now is, you know, that location down on Far River for some asymptomatic testing. You know, the other alternative, and I'll just put it out there, you know, if, you know, for those that are willing to go to Rhode Island, you know, you can also easily sign up over there at McCoy. Recently had to do it myself, who's easy enough to go in and out, never get out of your car, set up an appointment, provide insurance info if you've got it, but that's about it. And a turnaround time was, you know, less than 48 hours, you know, so. Yeah, it's, it's unfortunate that, you know, State of Massachusetts, we know, has this big gap down in this part of the state where they're, you know, we can't get testing for our own residents, so we have to go over to Rhode Island. But yeah, worst comes, you know, worst case scenario of if we need to get some testing or somebody needs some testing, that's that's certainly an alternative.
Well, it's funny you say that, because when I used to go with the Bristol County Fire Chiefs to Boston to solicit for funding, they would say, Seacom, what part of Rhode Island is that in? I mean, we are, we do border Rhode Island on three sides. I mean, it's not our fault, but they don't consider us to be part of Massachusetts.
Unfortunately. And you have a number of communities between Seacom and Rehoboth and, you know, Swansea, they're, you know, they'll have any immediate access that they have to drive, whether you're a senior or or somebody who doesn't necessarily have the ability to, you know, get to Far River or get to Attabur. It's unfortunate, because these people, you know, sometimes they're just, they want to get some testing, just even though they're asymptomatic and they need to get places or they've been in contact. So need to, you'd be able to provide this for them so that they don't have to travel so far, even when they're sick for that matter, you know, which is unfortunate. So is there anything else with regards to this topic before I move on? All right, thank you. Item R, review and discuss.
Sorry, I was muted. I don't think there was any resolution to the to the to the question at hand regarding the the task force. It was just kind of skimmed over. That's fine if we don't want to do anything. Do we or do we not?
Mr. Mr. Kadim, do you, do you think that there's a need to set up a task force or to have some kind of contingent authority for liaison to be on that, to be on a potential task force going forward?
I mean, I'll leave it up to the to the board. I don't necessarily see it in in the near future unless there are significant shutdowns and, but I don't really foresee that happening, to be honest with you.
Okay. My opinion is you've got an excellent handle on it. Between you and the department heads that are directly involved, I don't see a need. Again, it's part of your day to day operations, so to speak. So just continue down the road. I mean, if you need the board, you know where we are. Obviously, you know how how to get in touch. So I would say just continue. That's just me.
Mr. Andrew, it's a second, can't see you and you're on mute. Are you all set?
All set.
Thank you. Anybody else?
With the caveat that we may have to revisit it in the future, but like everybody said.
All set for now.
Yep.
Agreed. Okay. Item R. Review and discuss the open meeting complaint dated December 1st, 2020, but submitted to the town on December 23rd, 2020, regarding the Board of Selectmen's amended agenda that was posted after the time allowed for public comments have been closed and and response to the complaint filed by Doreen Taylor. So the board has received a copy of the open meeting law complaint. I will read the complaint itself. Obviously, if there's any discussion after I read the complaint, we can have it. Our duty tonight is to make a motion to accept accept the complaint, and then we also have to make a motion to you know, give permission to the town administrator and town council to submit a, you know, submit a response. The complaint provided is the agenda from Ms. Taylor. The agenda posted for the 1118 Board of Selectment meeting was made available on 11/12/2020 at 3:50 PM. Specific rules for the public participation and comments noted as Monday, 11/16/2020 at noon time. At approximate 3:30 PM on Monday, 11/16, the distribution of an amended agenda took place. The amendment was adding two items. A, consider the appointment of Dean Azabella to the position of Chief of Police. B, consider the approval of the Chief of Police contract. The chairman closed comments from the public on Monday, 11/16/2020 at noon time. The public was not allowed to be heard. Further, the, further, the town was issued a Code Red Order closing all municipal buildings to the public without appointment on Tuesday, 11/17/20. At that time, it was not clear whether the selectmen would be meeting in person or by virtual or by virtual connections. No direction was, had been provided. So. Mr. Kadim.
Last question?
Yes.
Mr. Kadim, can you clarify for me? The governor's orders regarding the modifications to our meetings due to COVID. Did that require us to to have a question and answer? Format?
Well, there's never been, there's, there's never been a requirement for public or citizen input. That's just something that the board has done as as what I would call public service to allow for the public to to speak on items on the agenda. There is, there is no requirement from from a legal standpoint. The board, I did, I did forward the the board legals comment that they drafted in there. You'll you'll see that that specifically states that there is no specific requirement for that. And quite frankly, they didn't find any violation to the matter whatsoever, in terms of as it was listed in the complaint.
So then which so we, we do, we're doing something for the benefit of the residents, which I understand. I don't see how that should limit us from having to modify and being able to modifying an agenda if something comes up after that time period.
Right.
So.
And I'll, and I'll, and I'll read it. I've got the letter. I've got the letter here. It says, it must be noted that pursuant to General Law Chapter 38, subsection 20G, the board is not obligated to allow any public participation at a meeting. It only provides the written comment period as as a public service. There was no, there was no violation, therefore, by adding the agenda items afternoon on November 16th, which he notes earlier on in his his response, that the amended agenda was well before the 48 hour period.
So am I, am I wrong, but memory serves that we we amended the agenda in the past during COVID when all of this was going on, and there was no such complaint then either.
No, but, you know, I guess somebody can make an argument, just because it wasn't a complaint, doesn't mean that there wasn't a violation. But you're right, we we have amended it before. As long as your amended agendas are before the 48 hour period, it's acceptable. Anything after 48 hours is a violation.
Yep.
I read the brief, I read the brief. I'm I'm good with it. I don't know where everyone else stands.
Is there any other discussion? All right, can I have a motion to accept receipt of the open meeting complaint?
Don't move. Or seconded, however you want to put it, either way.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Adam Petronio, I.
David V R I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew Dye.
Justin Sullivan, I. Now, can I have a motion to further direct town council and I guess through Sean Kadim as well to submit our response to the Department of Open Government.
Don't move.
Seconded.
Okay, roll call, please.
Adam Petronio, I.
David V R I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew Dye.
Justin Sullivan, I. Thank you, gentlemen. Item S, consider accepting the minutes of December 16th, 2020.
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Did you say discussion?
Yes, I did. Yeah, I asked discussion. Did you have something?
You asked, I thought somebody else said they wanted to have a discussion. No, Adam Petronio, I.
David V R I.
Chris Zora, I.
David Andrew Dye.
Justin Sullivan, I. Committee speaks. Do we have anybody on? I'm going to take a look over at the participants. Okay, we have somebody on here. Ms. Days, can you help me make this person available or open them up? There we go.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
Thank you. Yes.
Hi.
Please state your name and your address, please.
Sure, my name is Adam Pedro. I live at 228 West Avenue. I'm here on behalf of the Seacom residents against excessive taxation. Our Seacom working families have gone through hell this year due to COVID, only to receive a higher tax bill than ever before, digging the knife in even deeper. A petition has begun in order to bring attention to the severity of the excessive property taxes and ridiculous public expenditures that this town has brought forth. Year after year, increase after increase, the town swipes the card, the residents foot the bill. So I will be delivering the petition once it's been completed. But I do want to mention a few of the statements I've received. The new property tax rate is completely excessive. Seacom resident my entire life, now getting close to moving due to my already 11,000 a year taxes, also owning a business in town. Need to stop hiring assistants for the TA. It is really getting hard. Unreasonable tax increases. House values for tax purposes have been going up every year, remodeled or not. Actual market values are lower. Taxes keep on getting raised. This was not the year to impose another increase. COVID hit many folks and this makes it harder. I am newly moving to town and these tax rate increases have me thinking of canceling the real estate transaction. My family cannot afford extra expenses, especially during and after this pandemic. I'd love to know what the increases are for. Another commenter said way out of line to raise taxes, especially for seniors and people that lost their job to to the pandemic in Seacom. We are retired and on fixed incomes. Not a good year to do this. We're all hurting this year, being out of work. This is not the right time. Have a heart. Our tax bill went up $442 a quarter. I've been here listening for the past two and a half hours and sadly, I've not heard a single tangible, concrete idea on how the town is going to fix the increase after increase of tax rates every single year. And then this year, the town screws us over once again. So I truly, I know you have two weeks until your next meeting. I truly hope you can all figure out a way to fix this with the town. And if not by then, I guess I'll have to contact the the State Division of Local Mandates, but hopefully we'll come to that. Thank you. I've lived here my whole life. I know you all love this town as well. I'm just letting you know that the the residents of this town are extremely fed up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pedro. Do I hear?
Yes. Is Mr. Andrew still on?
Mr. Pedro.
Yes, I am. I'm still here.
Um. All, just I, I'm not sure if you're aware, but all expenditures are approved at town meeting. And and as we do develop a budget, we do present it at town meeting that is voted on at town meeting and approved by town meeting, not by this board or by anyone. So how many town meetings, I would urge you to, if that's how you feel, please get as many people as possible to actually to attend town meeting if they haven't, because that would be the forum where the town decides what our budget will be, what our expenditures will be.
Mr. Andrew, you're absolutely correct. The issue is that your town meetings are not your town. Your town meetings are a few people who are able to attend those meetings. Seacom is full of working class people, full of working and middle class people. We work full time. We have to take care of our children. So the idea that we can all attend these meetings is a bit diluted, with all due respect. So I I do.
I would have to differ to that.
Please let me finish, sir, please. I do believe that the town needs to look into why each and every year property values go up regardless of what the market is, even though that's what the town says. And then you also have to look at the spending that's going on, because, I mean, let's be honest, the spending isn't good. I've looked at the budget, shouldn't be 300 and some thousand dollars for recreation and culture. I mean, what exactly are we doing? I mean, so with all due respect, I do think you're incorrect on that.
Well, I mean, ultimately, when it comes to to things that are important to one another, we do have to find the time and do what we have to do to attend these kind of meetings. I I know myself, many others do everything we can to volunteer, attend meetings that we need to attend, shuffle schedules around. And if you want your voice to be heard, you have to show up. This is the the government, the, that is the format of our government and that is the only way.
I understand that. I absolutely understand that. But again, you were elected by the people, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you were elected by the people to represent their best interests and to ensure that their well being of their lives, that they're not being screwed over in taxes year after year. You were elected by us to represent us. So the idea that we You were elected by us to represent us. So the idea that we somehow have to go down to the town hall. We're now in the days of COVID to go on Zoom and have the whole town on Zoom just so that our taxes aren't raised. And our bank accounts aren't screwed over. I think that's a bit diluted to think that way. With all due respect, and actually, to be honest with you, Mr. Andrew. Again, I've been listening to this for two and a half hours now. You brought up a few points already. That I thought were some of the best remarks of the night. Okay, you're actually looking at why we're spending insane amounts of money for no reason. So. I have complete respect for you. I have complete respect for this board. But I do think sometime needs to be taken to to look at tax laws, look at the increases. And I'm very willing to assist in any way I can. But again, we've elected you to do this job. We shouldn't have to.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pedro. Turnover looks like Mr. Zora, and then I'll go to Mr. Viera.
I just want to say to Mr. Pedro, we have in the past, the school committee. Multiple meetings at town meeting have had babysitters available to watch kids. Students to get credit and for for their hours and stuff. So we've had. Sitting hours available. We've done everything that we can to try to get people to attend. Stuff goes through us. We pass it on so the the people can make the ultimate decision. And if you were at the, I believe it was the last town meeting. We even, we, Mr. Kadim goes line by line, every single dollar amount, every budget, even down to, I believe it was a. A two hundred dollar cellphone bill, if I remember correctly. So you have everything presented in front of you down to every penny. When we go line by line, and people have gotten up and asked before what exactly. Like I said, a two hundred dollar bill was, and so it's been explained before. People have came up, asked questions and. And everything's right there. There's nothing hidden in the budget. There's no. There's nothing like that shady business, as you could say, is going on because everything's presented to the town people.
Mr. Viera.
Mr. Pedro, your your concerns are obviously well taken. Mr. Sullivan and I, we were really concerned going into this budget session. Because of all the reasons that you stated, primarily for the senior citizens that don't have the ability. To go out and work an extra job and raise additional monies to pay the increase in taxes. But with that being said, the individuals who just spoke about. The budget hearings and that sort of stuff. Mr. Kadim probably puts together one of the best but budget presentations. And I've been involved since the early seventies. The best budget presentations that I've ever seen. Again, he does that budget presentation who's usually there or the department heads and the Board of Selectmen. There is, it's rare that any questions are asked. Please, by all means, your point is well taken, but attend those meetings, ask the questions. You probably will get the answers. They may not be what you're looking for, but you'll understand the budget better. Do I agree with the increases every year? Absolutely. My taxes go up. Every year as well. My taxes have gone up over four hundred and fifty dollars this year. So again, it's hard on all of us. Your point again is well taken. I know I'm repeating myself, but God. Come out, voice your opinion. You know, here in C Conc, you probably have the fairest form of government out there. The only. Difference. In the other government is the council, town council, they make the decision. And that's it. You live with the decision they made. At least here, the voting constituents here have the opportunity. To ask the question, vote yes, vote no, whatever they feel they need to do. So again, I know you work. I work ten hours a day. Please try to make it. I mean, it's usually only one night. Every six months. I don't think that's a lot to ask. I mean.
Mr. Vera, I can absolutely assure you.
Mr. Pedro, Mr. Pedro. Let Mr. Vera finish, and I'll come back to you and.
Sure, no problem.
I mean, we we talk about a fifty eight million dollar budget. And we're lucky if we get a hundred and twenty five people there. That's a lot of money to be spent. At the decision of a hundred and twenty five people. I mean, and we're lucky to get a hundred and twenty five. A lot of times it's less. So again, please, by all means, get involved, you know, come out, voice your opinion, vote yes, vote no. And and maybe we can control some of the spending and the control some of the tax, obviously. Taxes going up. So again, your point's well taken. I consider, I'm concerned as you are. I mean. It it's, where's it stop?
Sorry, Mr. Pedro, go ahead. I didn't mean to cut you off there. I just wanted to make sure that we have a give and take and.
Of course.
Have a discussion here that way. We're not talking over each other.
Absolutely. Great points, Mr. Viera. And I absolutely will be at the next budget meeting. I I I guess the last thing I just want to mention is. With all due respect, the the notion that, well, we only had a hundred and twenty five people show up or. The the issue with that idea is you're elected. So just because people don't show up doesn't mean your hands are tied and you have no, your hands are not tied.
They absolutely are.
So, so, Mr. Pedro, there there's actually, there's a couple of things, and just to kind of speak to the the tax bill that everybody that we all received, right? I don't know how much you've looked into the how it's broken down, but. You know, understand that the state has, you know, limitations as far as how much the town budget can go up, and that's two and a half. You know, myself and obviously with Mr. Vera's, you know, you know, support as well, we both saw an opportunity. To try to see if we couldn't mitigate what that town budget impact would be to the taxpayers, you know. Within that two and a half, you have to understand that there's, you know, to dig a little deeper. There's contractual obligations, there's costs to maintain, you know, current services. You're adapting, obviously, the the growth of the government and. You know, and I say the growth of government for what it provides for the town, you know, for the townspeople. You know, so that that's just within the two and a half percent on its own. The separate, the other issue that you have is that when you get to town meeting and then we vote for debt exclusion items. That those items get billed once they, you know, once the, once the bond notes go out. That now gets broken down and goes on top of the average tax bill. Okay, so that's a, that's an additional funding and and that's something that the town has opted to do. In lieu of doing tax overrides, you know, in the past, so do override of two and a half. You know, in order to cover some costs, they could have had the option to go to three and a half percent. Okay, and you see this in. Particularly, you know, communities all around Boston, they do it often. The other component that you have to this is. And and you've mentioned about property value assessment. The Assessor's Office and the Board of Assessors is responsible for, you know, what that, what the assessment values are, and they have a criteria for that. And I would strongly encourage, you know, asking them what their process is, what their methodology is. In getting that, they come and they present to us. You know, proposed tax rates for the upcoming year. We just got done back in beginning, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, beginning of December, right?
Those two meetings ago.
So two, two meetings ago. Reviewing what the tax rates would be in in this, in our town, we actually have the benefit, unlike. Let's look at Rehoboth, right? Rehoboth doesn't have a commercial tax base. We have a commercial tax base here. And we and we don't have in, I forgot, I'm drawing a blank on the terminology, but there isn't an equitable, you know, tax. That goes to the to the businesses and, you know, versus the residents, you know, the tax base, the businesses have a higher tax rate. And what we had than what the residents have. And the tax rate at which we voted upon and agreed upon was the lowest allowable by the state. Was the lowest allowable tax rate. So we couldn't go lower. And the assessed values are are what are presented by the Board of Assessors, which this board doesn't have control over. So, you know, so there's a combination of a bunch of different mechanisms in play here. As you can see, so if if you, I certainly agree, if you want to take us to task. On the building of the budget and what goes in and how we're spending it. Absolutely. You know, that that is certainly something that we can control. You know, if we had voted for a higher tax rate by the assessors, want to take us to task on it? Sure, I totally get that, but we voted for the lowest. So. You know, I I think we're trying to do the best that we can, and I understand that, you know. Everybody, we all feel it when it when the taxes go up, and especially, you know, that was part of the reason why I was looking for. A lower tax rate or a lower tax budget. You know, budget increase, you know, on the town this year because we recognize that this was going to be the time that people were going to feel the pain. You know, and there's going to be a point to where the state funds and the state support on us. Is gonna, you know, it's gonna go away, and then we're gonna have to feel more of a burden. It's gonna get even more difficult on us. And and there have to be even more difficult decisions on our town government. So it it is, there there is a lot on the horizon that we we certainly have to to consider. But I I just want to share that with you so you understand it's not, it's not as simple as you may think. It's it's a pretty complex. Process and, you know, it it does take a little bit of time. I spent some, spent a few years on the finance committee just trying to, you know. Get familiar with everybody's budget, you know, before I even sat on, you know, sat here as a board of selectmen, got elected a couple of years ago. So it it it's not, it's not easy, but, you know, I'm certainly willing to have a conversation with you, you know. On the side and help you understand a little bit more, but I I think we're trying to do the best we can in in the best interest. Could we do better? Sure, yeah, always could, but. You know, there there's, there's certainly more on the horizon that we're gonna have to probably evaluate and and look at.
Thank you. Yeah, I definitely, I definitely do need to speak with the Assessor's Office. But I I thank you all for for taking the time to answer my questions and have a good night.
Mr. Pedro, before you go.
Yes.
If I, Mr. Vera.
Mr. Pedro, there's a vacancy on the Board of Assessors. I mean, get in on the ground floor there. Those are the folks that obviously determine or make the suggestion to us as to what they think. The tax rate should be. Also, the Capital Improvement Committee. There's two vacancies there where you can definitely make a difference. So please fill out a talent bank form, join one of those two boards or committees. And you'll hit the ground running. Again, maybe it'll help you understand what we go through as members of the Board of Selectmen. In determining what we should or shouldn't do. And I would welcome that. I mean, I I think we need people like yourself.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I will definitely look into that and hopefully I can reach out to to you also.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Pedro.
Thank you.
Good evening. I don't see if there, it doesn't appear that there's anybody else for Community Speaks. Item, other business, discuss topics not reasonably anticipated by the chairman, forty eight hours, forty meeting. Something was brought to my attention by another board member of of an agenda item. Mr. Andrew, do you want to handle this now or do you want to wait to the Board of Selectmen liaison reports?
No, I think this, if this, Mr. Kadim, if this falls underneath the forty eight hour rule. Considering that we were just made aware that it's going to be on the the planning board agenda. I'd like to bring it up now.
Mr. Kadim, you think we're okay with that? You're on mute, still on mute.
So sorry, I I leave it under the liaison reports.
Okay.
Fair enough. Time administrators report, DPW.
No update there. Executive time, we've we've got training being conducted now. We've got. Personal training before, just to familiarize themselves with the the new software that's going on before we. We actually have a hands-on training, which will be taking place next week, so. Wrapping up, coming close to going live with the target date being February.
Okay. Board of Selectmen Liaison Reports and Comments, Bristol County Advisory Board, nothing new to report, Aiken School Expansion.
Yes, they're going full steam ahead. Like I've mentioned, we're now on one side of the building putting down floors. If anyone's done construction in their house, know that floors is pretty much getting close to the final steps. It's time to select furniture to start coming in, then we'll be moving the technology and hopefully we wrapping up that project fairly soon in the next few months.
Okay. Five forty RKF.
I believe they're meeting tomorrow night. Unfortunately, I can't attend. I have a South C Conc Fire Station meeting to attend, so again, I won't have anything to report. To report for the next meeting, either unless Sean is gonna go to that meeting. I don't know. How we can attend both meetings, but I'm sure if it can be done, he will.
I I think I think it's, I think it's just invoices approval.
Okay. So. Okay, that, well, that's good. That's a positive thing. But again, I've got nothing to report on the five forty Arcade Avenue.
All right, Veterans Council.
Veterans Council. Obviously, we did decorate the day before Christmas. We did decorate the Christmas tree. So the veterans obviously would feel some sort of holiday spirit in decorating the tree. Things are going well there. We are going to meet shortly to discuss some plans with the. Veterans Agent for the Memorial Day Parade. Whether that is going to be a parade that we used to enjoy or not. One never knows with this COVID and where we're going to be with that whole situation. So. Again, everything's moving in a positive direction. We'll just hope and pray for the best.
Okay, and I guess we'll stay with you. South End Fire.
South End Fire, as I mentioned, we're meeting tomorrow evening. It'd be virtual again, no, no given location. Sean has created the RFQs for the OPM. So again, we'll be obviously finalizing that tomorrow evening, I believe. Sean, you want to go into the timeline? I don't have it in front of me. Hopefully you do.
Yeah, so so the bid was open to, when, actually today, the sixth. So today was the official official day, the closing of the bids. So with the bids proposals that are due would be. February tenth, which is a Wednesday at three P M.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we're moving right along. We do need, obviously, to discuss at some point in time. What we're going to do with the old school administration building. Obviously, there needs to be. Some monies unless you think, Sean, we've got the monies to take the building down. Do the hazardous material mitigation if there, again, is any hazardous material. So again, I think it's a one of progress. We are moving forward. Hopefully, we'll. Maybe be ready for spring town meeting with some numbers.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Right. I'd like to, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn, to enter into executives. I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Mr. Andrew, thank you for stopping me there. I was getting ahead of myself. I will, I'll go around and I'll start with you with regards to Board of Selectmen comments and.
So it came to my attention, it's come to my attention that on the plan next meeting. There is going to be a discussion on a potential asphalt paving company to be located. Or that wants to come into C Conc, which is great, but it wants to come directly next to a residential neighborhood. I think with all the complaints that we as the Board of Selectmen have had to deal with. With respect to the residents from Carter's Way and the presentations and times that they've come before us, trying to get help. For with respect to the Lynch Paving Company that is in East Providence, but is directly abutting them. I think it would behoove us to send some sort of notification to the planning board. Letting them know of the issues that we've been having in that development with those residents and the neighboring facility. And how in that instance, we had an existing facility where a residential neighborhood was then suddenly placed next to it. And what's before them will be an existing neighborhood with. A a similar company wanting to go next to that neighborhood. We can't do anything in the other situation. You kind of know what you're buying and you know what you're moving next to. Uh, we can't do anything in the other situation. You kind of know what you're buying and you know what you're moving next to. Um, but in this instance, you have people that have owned those homes or own those homes, have had it for a very long time. You have a company that wants to move in, and I mean, the type of complaints that we've been dealing with have been sent, any, everything from noise complaint. They made mostly quality of life, but no, noise complaints from doors banging at three AM, four AM, working on off-hours throughout the week. Um, and, uh, debris, stockpiling on-site, that's hundred, hundred feet tall. Uh, spilling into neighboring wooded areas and questioning about whether it's going into wetlands or not. I think it would behoove us, and I believe they're also going before Conservation Commission as well the following night. Again, send that letter, let the boards and commissions know what we've been dealing with and asking them to put any sort of restrictions or limitations to ensure that the residents that live in those neighboring neighborhood, uh, areas uh, don't have to put up with, uh, that others have had to do the condition of when they bought the property. So, at this point, I would just want to make sure we're, that, that we as a board are okay with sending that kind of a letter to planning and to conservation, because it's my understanding that the planning board meeting is on the eleventh and the conservation meeting is on the twelfth.
Yeah, it was just posted today.
I'm sorry, did you, conservation is the eleventh, planning's on the twelfth.
Okay, vice versa, but either way, um, I, I think those boards and, and commissions need to know what we've been dealing with, make sure they're aware of it, and if they can put limitations, it's completely within their purview to look out for the residents of this town. And if, if they're not made aware of it, they can't do anything about it.
Agreed. Mr. Vera.
I'll be brief, I'm sorry, um, just to echo, uh, Mr. Andrew's sentiments. The establishment that he's talking about, uh, that a bus caught his way. I also experienced any backlash from there that also was in my backyard. And there are times when it's totally, totally, totally unbearable, um, and that's been there uh, ever since I can remember. I've been here since nineteen seventy-two, so, uh, you're exactly right, Mr. Andrew. If the planning board, uh, zoning board, or conservation, or the Board of Health don't do something about it now, they're gonna have to live with whatever gets put there forever and a day.
That's right on the border, Massachusetts and Rhode Island.
Yes.
So, it looks like the access is on the East Providence side.
It is.
It's always Providence land.
Right.
The map, that's, uh, their quarry is on the Massachusetts land.
Right.
The, the property that Mr. Andrew is referring to, Mr. Petronio, is forty-five industrial.
Over by the Speedway.
Over by, yeah.
Sort of bust Jane Holland to the, about thirty feet of woods.
Jane Holland neighborhood is, is right there.
That's right off Warren Avenue. And it does, it, it abuts that property, and those are high-end houses there. Not that it matters of the cost of the house, but those people will not be happy.
I don't think anybody would be. You bought a home expecting to live there, and, um, it's, and then all of a sudden you get the kind of banging and everything else and, and visual atrocity like we see over at Carter's Way. And I don't know if it's the plan of that facility, but at least we can get ahead of it right now.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's especially disturbing to me to see an East Providence company with, with their business in the quarry on Massachusetts land.
That started out as, as, as Fort Brothers.
Yeah, that's actually very disturbing to me. I'm wondering how that's possible.
That was there before I believe Mr. Vera's houses were built.
That's right, absolutely.
I was, they were there a long, long time.
A long time.
So.
We want to prevent situations like that happening in the future.
Well, that's, exactly. I mean, that's not like the individual that buys a house next to a piggery and then wants the piggery closed. You know, um, yeah, we've got a chance to make a difference now.
All right, so I think if, if I'm reading, reading the group here right, I think there's a consensus that we need to send a letter to conservation and planning. Uh, I guess question being here, who drafts it? Mr. Andrew, Mr. Kadim?
I did watch the initial meeting, and they addressed a lot of the questions that the other board members have brought up, by the way, off the initial meeting.
Yeah, I, I can, I can, I can draft, I can draft something, but to, to Mr. Zara's point, I, I think there's a little bit of a, a difference between the Lynch facility itself and, and industrial court. Um, Lynch obviously is operational in East Providence. They don't, um, comply with any of our, our zoning bylaws. So, uh, zoning is gonna really dictate, uh, what can be done in that industrial part. And again, it, I think the board needs to, to remember that it is a, uh, industrial zones property. So, there's gonna be limitations as to what you can do for, uh, uh, setting limitations to them. But we can definitely talk about the, uh, quality of life issues, the noise, noise pollution, just the dust control, things of that nature.
Material. I think those are the items I'm looking to bring.
Not, not only that, Sean, I, I have a problem here with air quality. Depending on the time of year, and if they don't change the filters on a regular basis, air quality is tough. Really, so we need to.
What's our ability, what's our ability to, um, find, uh, a Providence business front that's working on Massachusetts land?
That, so that they're not working on Massachusetts land. They, they've got a portion of land property that's, um, in Seco, but none of that property is being utilized for their operation.
Okay, well, looking at the Google Maps, I mean, it looks like a sizable chunk as well, Rock Quarry.
Yeah, I, I, but I, I don't want to deter, I mean, not to say that it's not important to look at solutions to the problem at Carter's Way, but I, the item I'm bringing up is to focus more at, onto what's being proposed over in, in the industrial park in that particular area right now.
Fair enough, yeah.
Mr. Andrew, you and I spoke earlier, and I, maybe you already said this, you know, is your intent to say, hey, you know, if, if this goes forward, you know, at least have some level of, you know, just put some restrictions in place within reason?
I think what, I think what Mr. Kadim said is right, right? And I'm not gonna disagree with him on that. If it's allowed by right, okay, but from a zoning standpoint, there's nothing that we can do to stop it. It's allowed by right. However, from a planning perspective, from a conservation perspective, if there's any sort of concerns that we can, that, that are out there and that have been voiced for a similar business that's outside of our control, it would only make sense to bring it to their attention now, because they're not just limited by what planning allows. They're charged with protecting what, uh, the, the, the best interest of the residents of Seco. So, to take it to the point that I mean, if we can put something in planning's determination limiting stockpiling of material to no more than twenty-five feet in height, then that's a win, because if you go behind Carter's Way right now, you've got a hundred-foot stockpile sitting behind there that you can almost see from the old Firefly Golf Course. And I think those are the things that I'm, that, that I'm looking to see brought to attention. Uh, we have our bylaws, like Mr. Kadim said, that, that they go into operating hours and you can't be working at four o'clock in the morning or banging the backs of, uh, of the, of those trucks at four in the morning. But it gives us the opportunity to put it in writing and further outline that we've had issues like that, like this in the past with similar facilities, and that it, we're aware of them, it won't be tolerated.
I, I think we need to go one step further. I think obviously the Board of Health needs to get involved because there is no water down off Warren Avenue down that far. So, those folks are gonna obviously be living off well water. If you start polluting the groundwater, okay, with the runoff from the asphalt plant, that could contaminate their wells, obviously, and then somebody's gonna be on the hook for supplying them with town water.
Mr. Zora.
Yeah, I would just add this, when I, as everyone intends when they come in, they, it looks like they want to be good neighbors. Uh, to Mr. Andrew's point, for as far as stockpiling all their materials, they said they're gonna have it in-house in like a garage to keep it out of the weather. They're not intending to bang tailgates. They're, they're pretty aware of all the, uh, conditions that, that we go through with Lynch. Because someone on the planning board actually compared it. Everything we're having has a discussion right now. It's been, it was brought up at that first meeting. But it doesn't hurt the letter.
Yeah, so great. We send the letter and we just ask them to require all stockpiling to be indoors.
Well, we can't, can't require them, but that's what they want to do. It's an industrial zone. We can only.
But want and, and them actually doing it or saying they're gonna do it and they're actually doing it are two different things.
Well, they're gonna do it because they're actually.
Now, and if they say we, we will be stockpiling, all right, then you shouldn't mind if we put a, if we put a, a restriction on here requiring you to stockpile inside. That's all.
You know, i- it's always like, we've always said, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than it is permission. They'll promise you the world, once they get their foot in the door, that's it. Then it's catch me if you can.
So, Sean, can you throw together a letter to, to submit to both of those boards for next week?
Planning and conservation. Do you want to include health?
Sean, you froze.
Should, yes, should include help. Adam, you're right.
Hold on.
I think Town Hall might have just had, um, something definitely just happened because I lost access to my remote desktop at the same time that he froze.
Gotcha.
Is Sean okay? Oh, okay, yep. Just worried about you there for a second.
You look frozen.
You fell off the face.
I think he is frozen.
Yeah, he's still out, so.
Yeah, it's, it's still trying, it's still trying to reconnect. So, um, he's, he's operating in Town Hall, and I have a secondary computer set up for, um, remote access and everything just got disconnected.
There you go. So, all right, so Carol Anne, we're gonna put you on the hook, put together a letter.
Okay, I'll make sure I tell Mr. Kadim.
No, no, we said make sure you put together a letter.
She's, she's typing as we speak.
She's not efficient.
So, obviously, make sure it's three departments, not two.
Yeah, I, I think that, that's a great point. Board of Health, Conservation and Planning.
Got it.
This may also be Mr. Kadim's way of ending his night too, so we'll see.
Just if you could, when you do at least a letter to the Board of Health, uh, explain that there is no water down there in that new development. Uh, it's all groundwater, well water, whatever. Um, so again, they need to have their two cents put in for what it's worth as to what they would, we, would require to preserve any groundwater that, uh, that may be required.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. So, I think we're all set. Sean's still trying to get on here, but, um, if there isn't anything else.
So, open space and recreation plan, the public session was conducted since last meeting. And, uh, I participated in that. It went very well. They did a, a great presentation. There are obviously some placeholders that they have in the presentation. I asked some questions during that. Um, I believe that me, we might want to consider adding that one to our liaison reports as they're probably getting ready to, um, maybe in the next few months, present something to the board.
Okay. All right, is that it, Mr. Petronio, for you?
That's it.
All right, Mr. Vera, you have anything else?
Almost said, thank you.
Mr. Zora.
Um, I'll say briefly again, I received another complaint about that playground with those, uh, bars. Um, I'm still determined, I, in, I believe we should be removing those bars and putting a slide in place. But I guess I'm the only one. We put up signs and everything like that, but I still don't think it's, I still don't think it's good. In my opinion.
Okay.
So, while we're at it, maybe we'll have the Parks and Rec Director take a look in that.
I don't, I, I disagree. I mean, nobody, does no one play on monkey bars anymore?
No, it's the bars, it's those slide, those sliding bars.
When you talk about, it's not the monkey bars. There's one that, uh, has a very tall structure, and the only thing coming down are two bars.
You wrap your legs around, and we've already had kids falling and.
No, I, I say, I say monkey bars, but I'm being a little bit facetious, because though I understand we want to take care of, uh, we want to be safe and have safe equipment and everything else for our kids to play on. Uh, it is ultimately the responsibility of parents at those playgrounds to watch the kids and make sure they're playing on, on appropriate equipment. And, and we provided equipment that's appropriate for certain ages in the playground. If that, if that was the case, then there would be no playgrounds, no slides, no anything, because no one would graduate beyond playing in a sandbox.
Yeah, I agree. Have, have you been there? Have you seen these, these sliding poles?
I have. My children have played on them, and I stood right by them to teach them how to do it the first time, and then they, and the second time and the third time, and then they, you know, they picked it up and they win.
Right, and I've done the same thing like you, taught my kids how to do it, and I actually did it myself. And, um, but there's other kids that again hurt and people complaining, and I agree, maybe we should just put a slide there and make it all that much better for the people.
But I've also heard complaints where parents will drop the kids off, leave and come back and pick them up.
Yeah, oh, that's, that's another story. That's.
Yep.
No, it's not. It requires supervision. Supervision. When we were in school, we went out for recess, we had recess aids watching us while we were playing. If we go to the parks, our parents were supposed to watch us. We didn't just run around on our own, and I'm not saying that's what's happening. I'm just, I'm just trying a little, it seems like we're, a lot of people are, and, and I'm not saying about people in town. I'm saying in general, people are so not wanting to take the, the, um, uh, the foam pads off the corners, because they're afraid the kids are gonna bump their heads into them before, instead of teaching them how to walk and how to avoid those corners. You don't put your hands on a hot stove, but it's that kind of a thing.
There is a risk versus reward type.
I, I get it, and, and I understand that, and I, and I know I'm coming across a lot differently than I intend to come across, right? All I'm saying is, there was a playground that was designed by professionals. There was a playground that has, that, that has a wide range of varying pieces of equipment for different age groups. At the same time, if you as a parent don't feel that your child is up to playing on a certain piece of equipment, then you don't let them play on that piece of equipment.
I wish I just caught it in the planning stages. When I saw that, I figured it was a slide and I don't agree with it. A lot of other parents obviously don't either. So. We could cut the poles out and put a slide. I think it would be more functional and, and user-friendly.
Well, let's look into it. It doesn't hurt to look into it. I mean, if we can look into it, see what the cost, the additional cost is gonna be, and if it's not crazy and uh, Parks and Rec, they agree, there's nothing wrong with, with doing it.
I mean, it's regardless of our own personal opinions on it. Yeah, if, if it is a valid complaint, and I have seen some of the complaints too, as Mr. Zora has pointed out, and maybe we should just see how, you know, how we could just get rid of that obstacle. I mean, it, it wouldn't hurt anything, and it, and it does serve the community still.
Well, that's the other thing.
Which is the whole point of the playground.
There's a, there's a number of things over there that can, you can get hurt on if you're not paying attention. Um, that doesn't mean that everybody that gets hurt there, if they do get hurt, uh, means that they weren't paying attention. But again, you gotta make sure that your child is, is attempting to do something that's age-appropriate too. I mean, some of this responsibility falls back, as previously said, on the parents.
Yes, I think that's the point I'm trying to come across, because if that's.
We're all, I think we're all agreeing with that.
If that's the case, we need to get a, get rid of that, um, all of the climbing mechanisms that are on there. We need to get, we need to get rid of the one that you hang on and, and you kind of, um.
The monkey bars?
No, the one where you hang on and it slides you down like you're on.
Like you're on a zip line, yeah.
Like you're on a zip line. Get rid of it all, because your child could lose grip, fall and hit their head. lose grip, fall and hit their head on the floor.
Always do.
I mean, that's kind of what I'm getting it, getting at.
But that can happen with the slide too, I mean, so again, it goes back to, and it was previously mentioned, the parents watching their children. And the parents directing their children to their abilities, you know, I, I think, you know, that's a little difficult for you, don't use that, use this, I mean, at, at some point, the parents have to, uh, have to guide their children, we can't be responsible for everything, we, we can't be there.
Not, not a simple solution by far, yeah. But I think it's still, it's worth looking into, if we're having, say, if we're having reports of injuries, things like that, we have to at least do our due diligence to see if that, if there's something to it, nothing is, nothing is perfectly designed, so it could be a flaw with the the, the original design itself, but, um.
Absolutely, maybe we should, maybe we should look at, and I don't know if it's a requirement, no, maybe we should be looking at having the kids wear helmets, I, I don't, I don't know, I mean.
I, I agree, I mean, there's, there's, there's a degree of play at your own risk and, and watch your kid, and then there's a degree of making, you know, making sure we do our due diligence to, you know, have safe equipment, so. But, okay, if there, is there anything else, Mrs. Zora, do you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so I think that's covered everybody for, uh, board comments, I don't have anything new this evening. Like to entertain, uh, a motion to adjourn into executive session to, A, discuss complaints and discipline against an employee pursuant to Mastering the Law Chapter thirty-eight subsection twenty-one A one as having the discussion in open session would be detrimental to the litigation or bargaining position of the town. B, to discuss complaints and discipline against an employee pursuant to Mastering the Law Chapter thirty-eight subsection twenty-one A one as having the discussion in open session would be detrimental to the litigation or bargaining position of the town. Item C, to, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property pursuant to Mastering the Law thirty-eight subsection twenty-one A six as having the discussion in open session would be detrimental to, to negotiating position of the town four seventy-two, dot nav. Item D, negotiations with the United Steel Workers of America Clerical Unit ninety-five seventeen dash ten per Mastering the Law thirty-eight subsection twenty-one A three as having a discussion in open session would be detrimental to the litigation or bargaining position of the town. Item E, negotiations of the United Steel Workers Supervisors Unit Local ninety-five seventeen dash zero nine per Mastering the Law Chapter thirty-eight subsection twenty-one A three as having this, as having the discussion in open session would be detrimental to the litigation or bargaining position of the town. And item F, to approve the executive session minutes of December sixteenth, twenty twenty as distributed.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I'm turning.
Dave, you're right.
Chris, all right.
David, and today.
And so, all right, good night, folks, thanks for sticking with us.